Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to start the meeting at 7:06. And our first applicant is Kurtin Field. And we're going to read the application.
Is this on? I don't know if they can hear me. Can you hear me back there?
Nobody can hear anybody. It's not even...
Pushing the button. You're green, I'm green. If they can't, they can't. I'm not upset. Twelve years from now, they can't. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, May 3rd, 2021 at 7:55 PM via Zoom on the application in the great hall by Anthony Curtin for a special permit for the installation of an above-ground fuel storage tank to be located at 640 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. 02338. Said property is owned by Anthony Curtin as shown on assessors map 60, lot 14, title reference book 29293, page 0158. The applicant is seeking a special permit for the installation of above-ground fuel storage tank in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, section 167.7c, table use regulations, industrial uses, light industrial uses, including manufacturing, storage, processing, fabrication, packaging, and assembly. Area is owned business. It is petition number 938.
Mr. Curtin. You want to tell us what you want to do and what's going on with your application?
I had visited with the building inspector as to my intentions.
I don't think that you think work.
I don't know.
Okay. I had visited with our building inspector, who's no longer with us, and he had suggested, or he didn't suggest, he requested that I apply for an above-ground, a special permit for above-ground storage. I currently have a 50,000 gallon license for underground storage. I'm seeking to amend it to put the tanks above ground. And this is where I'm at.
Great. Do you have anything to add?
I'm Robert Caluccio with Web Engineering Associates, a professional engineer with been designing facilities like this for 25 years.
Can you tell us how this plan's going to, how this operation's going to work?
Sure. I'm not sure if it was to this board or another board, but I had written a narrative. So I'll basically, I'm not going to read the narrative, but I'm going to use it as... Is this working?
No, it isn't working.
Basically, it's going to store number two fuel oil, a 30,000 gallon tank of that, 10,000 of on-road diesel fuel, and 10,000 gallons of off-road diesel fuel. It's going to, the whole, the first thing that needs to be said is that the whole facility is going to be thoroughly vetted by the state fire marshal and the local fire department. Construction plans will be drawn up before, you know, before any of them have anything to look at. So they're, they'll be able to see the thing soup to nuts. It's, so it's going, the tanks are going to be inside of a concrete containment dike. The concrete containment dike is going to be designed to contain the largest tank plus a hundred-year storm. And the hundred years, usually it's a 25-year storm. The hundred-year storm was basically a request of the board of selectmen. So the, it'll be in this concrete dike. The dike will be recessed below grade, and the truck, where the truck parks to fill, to take, you know, to transfer fuel in and out of the tanks, will be pitched into the dike. So that if there's any drips or anything that happens during, during the loading or unloading process, it's in a, you know, the whole thing is one big self-contained unit. The, the tanks will have 90% alarms on them, so that when they get to a 90% level, he'll know that he's at the end of his, you know, the amount he wants to keep in those tanks. If it gets to 95%, then the pump will shut off. And that way, it's a redundant, basically a fail-safe, I should say, a fail-safe way of preventing an overfill. The vents and everything will be within the containment of the, will be within the confines of the containment. So that way, if even beyond that, it's all still going to stay in our containment dike. Now, the thing I want to say about number two fuel oil is that it is a class-two liquid and, and which is a rating based on its flash point. Now gasoline is a class-one liquid, and its flash point is minus 45 degrees Fahrenheit. That's why your car starts in the morning on a cold day. Number two fuel oil and diesel fuel have to be heated to their flash point, which is about 140 degrees. And then, in addition, it has to be atomized in order to be able to, you know, to support a flame. So the NFA handbook basically speaks about class-two liquids, fires that class-two liquids as being, you know, rare, if not almost impossible to take place. You might have heard the story where the, you know, the mechanic will throw a cigarette butt into the number-two fuel oil can. Don't do that, but that's, that is a joke in the, in the industry that, you know, that they, they brag that they've done it before. And that's how difficult it is to ignite these vapors, the vapors associated with number-two fuel oil. Well, in the end, we'll, we'll, we'll write a spill prevention plan that is required by the EPA. And the EPA may audit. They, they are on the, you know, on an audit circuit. And so we'll write this SPPC plan as though it was going to be audited. And I've been involved with a lot of audits with the EPA, so I know exactly what they want to see in the plan. And, and it's always more than what you might think just if you were, you know, doing this on your own.
Now, this facility is only going to be used by Mr. Curtin, right?
Well, I believe that-
No outside trucks other than the, the people that are going to come in and deliver the fuel to Mr. Curtin, right?
I'll, I'll let Tony speak to that.
And no, nobody's going to come in, an outside carrier that's going to come in and buy the fuel from you, or just for your own use, for the use that you're going to deliver to the customers?
Well, the person will come in, we can, come in, leave, delivery company.
Yeah, that's right. The delivery's going to come in, drop the fuel, drop the fuel off, then you're going to haul that fuel out of there and deliver it to the customers.
The one thing I want to say about having a bulk plant is that all of the business, you know, takes place in about a three-month period. So whereas in the summertime, there might be diesel fuel sales, but we're still looking at maybe one or two trucks coming in a day to deliver fuel to the plant. I don't mean a day, I mean a week. One or two a week.
In the summer offseason.
In this, yeah, in the offseason. You know, the, it steps up to maybe one, one a day and sometimes maybe two a day depending upon just the, you know, how things are scheduled. But in the wintertime is when those things-
The busiest part is from probably September all the way up to March?
Well, probably more like maybe the end of November.
It's the celestial winter.
September's still warm enough that, you know-
The people sell by-oil, the rest of-
They do. They're, they're fueling, yeah, they're-
Any members of the board who want to ask?
Yeah, I mean, is there going to be any kind of a foam suppression system? I know you say it's very difficult to ignite the fuel, but is there anything going to be, just in case we do have a problem?
No, there's, there is no, not a plan for a foam suppression system just because of, you know, it's not done in the industry.
All right, so it's not required in the industry itself?
It is not, yeah. No, if it was, if there was gasoline involved, it might be, you know, we might be talking about that. As you know, gas stations have the dry chemical, we, I design gas stations as well. They have a dry chemical fire station.
When you have a tanker coming to your place to, to fuel the tanks, to fill the tanks, what time, you have a timeframe on that there as to what, during the day that they might be there?
In the wintertime, the fuel will come when they can deliver it. We are considered in central service during the colder months. And it all depends on how cold it is. They may come, they may come at midnight, ideally, and hopefully they will just have, in their business hours. Given the quantity of storage, I would venture to guess it would be normal working hours. But I cannot guarantee that.
Can you turn the mic on so we can hear?
Wait, you got to wait. Go ahead.
I can't guarantee that it'll be-
Off-hours, you're looking at more normal hours as far as deliveries are concerned. But it could be at any time, as we were saying.
There's no speakers in here. There's no speakers in here. It's for the TV. It's not for-
Can you speak louder then? We can't hear it.
You want to repeat what you just said in a loud voice, please?
What do you want to know?
We want to hear what you said. We can't hear. The back is to us, and we can't hear that.
As far as delivery hours?
Yeah.
Between 4:00 AM and midnight in the celestial wintertime. And my business is, the heating over business is all dependent on temperature. Demand, the demand is by temperature. So we could be busy, we could, the last four years have been mild. 2015, we never stopped. So I'm going to tell you 4:00 AM to midnight will be my working hours.
Do you have any questions?
Yeah, did you have to go in front of any other boards in town to get this approved?
Planning boards are already approved.
And there's no conservation or board of health or anything like that?
There's no part of conservation, no.
Board of selectmen is, should be following after-
After us?
So you haven't gone to the board of selectmen?
We went in formally, that was first, which is, you know, just to, because typically or, you know, logically, you would go before a board such as them who's, before you do any, any kind of engineering. And to, you know, if it doesn't look like they're going to approve it, then you just shut it down because it's, it's not going to happen. And they, they gave us a path forward.
Do you have any tanks on site?
No, go for it.
Do you have any tanks on site now?
Storage tanks, no, just the trucks.
There are four chairs downstairs if you want to help move them. Here. Second is the lights that are there. They're recording. They're not recording. So if you want to speak, then you need to speak loudly so that everybody in the room can hear that.
Should we face that way? I'm supposed to talk to you. Are we turning around and talking to people?
No, we'll, we'll turn it over to the audience. We'll, then they'll ask your question.
They have questions. They'll have plenty of time to ask questions. And I'm sure that they will. Yes. So you mentioned that, so you mentioned that, that place in Hennaker that you, that you-
Okay, so you read that.
So, did you, and a lot of it's about traffic. How long is that, how long has that been established, those tanks? Have they been there a while?
No. That was a new facility.
Okay. So how typical are these types of tanks, I guess? Because I don't know a lot about the system that you guys-
The size that's being-
Are they pretty common?
Yes. It's a very common size. The, the, the example that I used in that, in that study was 40,000 gallon tank, with 2,000, 2, 10,000 gallon tanks for those, for all road. And so, yeah, 30,000, 40,000, 50,000 gallons is very common.
And there are no other, there are no other tanks like that in town, right?
Greeley's.
There are? Okay. So there are other tanks like that in town?
What size is that tank?
30,000. 30, you want the other one in town? I believe it's 30, 30, 35,000.
And you're asking for 50? What's that? Combined total for off-road and on-road?
That is the license that I have. Still can ask for a tank.
He's asking for the 50,000. He's, he has the license for it right now to, to operate. But he want, he's going to, instead of underground, he's going to go above ground. Like, like Mr. Greeley has. He has an above-ground tank.
Right, but not this size.
What's that?
But not this size.
I don't, I don't remember what Mr. Greeley has, but-
This one's small.
What, so what types of systems are you putting in that aren't already there? So mechanics, are you digging stuff up?
The whole thing is going to be new, random.
So where's the location on the property of it?
Do you want the plans?
You said you had an existing license?
My property is a gas station. It's issued a license by the state in 1979. I maintained it, I applied for the property in 1983. I maintained the license and, the town also requested annual permit. I maintained both of them. 38 years.
And this license is for?
Storage manufacturer? Oh, the, I'm sorry, excuse me. The license is for the storage of combustible, inflammable liquids. In Massachusetts, if you have 10,000 or more gallons, you have to go for a license. Now, he, they did that. And so what we would be, when we go to this board of selectmen, it will be to amend it to be above-ground storage instead of underground. We're not going to be going for the, the volume part of it because he already has that.
So you don't have a current special permit that you're amending?
I have a license that I want to amend, and I'm seeking a special permit for construction.
Well, I don't think we can amend a license from the state. All we can do is grant special permits.
That's correct. We're not, we're not-
So this is a, this is a new special permit? You don't have an existing special permit?
That's correct. The license comes from the board of selectmen. It never comes from the zoning board. And vice versa, the special permit comes from, well, there are some situations, but in this situation, the special permit always comes from zoning or, you know, some, our planning board.
And, you know, the site itself, I'm sure in the planning that you've, the site review that you've had, as far as turning radiuses for all these vehicles, there's no problem? We're not going to be backing out onto the street or everything's going to be able to maintain itself on the property itself?
If there's any, any backing and forth, any of that, it'll be behind the garage, not, not in the street.
Backing on the street.
And I read the, the sound report too. It seems like it's, it seems like it's fine when you look at the whole detail. In the, in the operation of the pumps, when you have them on, is there any specific time that you're, is it constantly from the day, all day long, or?
To load the truck would take 15 minutes. So the pump to load my trucks from the tanks would take about 15 minutes.
15 minutes?
200 gallons a minute, correct?
Yeah, we're probably less, more, you know, if we have our way, it'll be five minutes. But, you know-
So it's an intended type of setup?
Five to 10 minutes is yours.
It's not something that runs all day long as far as the company's concerned?
And then offloading is about, when the tanker truck comes in, that would be in the neighborhood of 20, maybe 15 to 25 minutes. Probably, you know, 20 is the average. Like I said, if, with the pump I have in mind, it'll, it should take 20 minutes.
So you're probably looking at a tanker a week?
In the wintertime, tanker a day. It's run, cold weather, maybe two. One tank a day is, 30 days is 300,000 gallons, two is 600. I don't think I'd be doing that kind of work.
Any more questions from the board?
He said- I would like to see on a plan how the trucks are coming in and coming out. There's nothing here showing that. Do you, do you know how the trucks-
I'm sorry?
He's, he's looking for how these vehicles are going to enter into your property.
Enter and, and leave. Is there a flow pattern?
There'd be, there'd be one truck in the ad that's driving around. There's no traffic in the ad. They can enter either way, and enter, exit either way, which is convenient for them.
Either way, on either side of the-
They can go clockwise or counterclockwise around the building.
Around this-
You show that on your drawing?
I do not. The site plan, I did not prepare the site plan. The site plan was prepared by Webby Engineering. Was only very close to the name of the company, but-
Any more questions from the-
We, we did do a traffic study. The traffic study basically said there were no issues with-
No, I read that.
Driving on the high, on the road or exiting off the road to enter under this facility. There, there would be, there'd be no reason if they, for them to back up, back out onto the street in this case because the, the plant is way in the back. So they really have to, to get in position, they're going to be getting in a position out of sight of the, of the road.
So they come in and then it just-
Yeah, they, the activity will be behind the garage.
And you said up until midnight. Are they coming now, up until midnight? Have they been?
No.
Okay.
I've been hauling you all myself.
Okay. So that's, the difference is where you have more-
I, I might start at 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning and pull a couple loads of oil.
Yeah.
And then maybe 8:00 o'clock in the evening, and do the same.
And so the difference now will be?
I'll reduce the truck traffic coming in and out of the ad by three, but I'll be getting one big trailer load. That's basically three and a third of my size trucks. One truck, one tank of 10,000 gallons is the maximum on a fuel.
Right now, he's driving to Quincy?
Yes.
Quincy to get his fuel grab from there. So he's lit, he's on the, this trip he makes from his property to get to the highway is about a mile, which is in, which is in Halifax. So it really would be eliminating all of that tram, all that delivery truck traffic in, that, you know, that takes place where he's not delivering fuel. He's just, you know, just driving. So now, with his fuel on the property, it's eliminating, you know, if there's four trips a day, that's, that might be eight miles of his trucks driving on, on Halifax roads.
And there's a, there's a concern that this is an unusual-sized tank. Can you give me some examples of local tanks that are similar?
Well, I, I can tell you that I've been doing bulk plants for 25 years, and I, I would, I have to strain to think of my last 20,000 gallon bulk plant. So 30,000 is the starting point.
Oh, so they're, oh, they're not lower, they're higher?
They're higher.
Okay.
But 30 is, is the start.
And can you think of a local one that's in kind of a similarly situated area? Because it's, it's definitely a residential area, but it's a busy traffic space. So I guess the concern is, I guess, I think some of these people's concerns are that it's, it's an unusually sized tank in a predominantly residential area, even though it's, the traffic seems, which is the, the focus of your study, it seems to be traffic. But I think the focus that I think I have a little bit of hesitation for is the neighbors and the typical-sized tank of a residential neighborhood like that, which I don't know what to talk about. So can you give me some examples, like specific examples that you know of, like within 10 or 15 minutes a year that might be similar?
And East Bridgewater on the corner of Walnut Street and Central Alvin Hollis has 40,000 gallons.
Okay.
And we designed that. We designed all of the Alvin Hollis facilities. And there's probably, I don't know if there's four of them within, you know-
For Alvin Hollis, yes.
Bridgewater, you know-
Duxbury.
Yeah, Duxbury, Waymouth.
Waymouth.
And then there's one other, oh, Hanover. And they're all, what they have is, he uses all 10,000 gallon tanks, but he has, like in Waymouth, he has about six of them.
Multiple ones, yeah.
Yeah, in multiple. And he did that in order, you know, to, you cert, yeah, okay. Stay far from it.
Didn't have to do that.
Not involved in a tank that's 10,000 or less.
Yeah.
So what are the hours of operations you're looking for?
Right now, I work, I start delivering at about 7:00 AM, and I work till I'm done, which is usually probably around 8:00.
Well, I'm talking about-
On a site there?
I'm talking about with this 50,000 gallons. Deliver, let me, delivery trucks, you know, the bulk delivery truck, and then all your home delivery trucks. What's the, the days and the hours you would need?
Then all winter months, I'm going to say 4:00 AM to midnight. And that depends on the delivery schedule, not my operating schedule, but when the delivery can come.
So between 4:00 AM and midnight, is that seven days a week?
Six.
Six, what day is not?
Sunday.
Sunday is off.
I deliver on Sunday.
Okay.
And that's usually for people who happen to run out of fuel.
Sure.
It's an emergency, but I don't schedule routine deliveries on Sunday.
So the only thing that would be happening Sunday is local deliveries with your own trucks? No bulk deliveries on Sundays?
I would not schedule one. I hope not. And I don't believe, once again, given the quantity of storage, I don't think it would be required.
A lot of the, what they, what he'll do though is when he returns back to the facility during normal working hours, if he thinks that he might have a, a delivery or more, you know, later in the evening, he's going to fill up, you know, when he returns from that day trip. He's not going to wait until 11 o'clock and then decide, oh, I know, I got to go fill up. So he'll be ready, he's ready for emergency.
I do have to sleep because they're stressful.
What size is the transfer pump?
20, 20 horsepower?
Similar to what the study was done?
Exactly. It was, it's the same pump that will be-
They're all electrical?
Yeah.
They're electrical pumps?
Yeah. And the, the interesting thing is I, I took my sound beater and I measured my lawnmower. And I don't know, when you're talking about decibels, it's, it's a logarithmic scale, which means that when you go from 80 to 90, you're, you're talking about 10 times more sound, sound pressure. And the lawnmower is around in the mid-90s, we're standing three feet away. The pump was, is in the mid-80s, which is, when I, when I did some decibel readings on the, on Plymouth, I was getting readings of, in the 80s. So it was the equivalent of standing three feet away from that pump, whereas nobody's loca, you know, from my report, you'll see that the levels dropped dramatically as you move away from the pump, especially in this case because-
Not at 4:00 AM.
It's his, it, yes, it, all hours, it would be, those decibel readings don't go by time.
Did you take decibel readings of the trucks?
I'm sorry?
Did you take decibel readings of the trucks?
I did, and they were in the 80s as well. In fact, but the, but the interesting thing was I took a reading of his truck as it was driving away from Plymouth Street, and I couldn't hear it. I could not hear his truck standing on the, on Plymouth Street. My, neither my, my gauge nor my ear could hear his truck while, when it was halfway back on the, you know, halfway alongside of his-
At what time of day was that?
About 3:00 PM.
Right. So the concern would obviously be 4:00 in the morning and midnight. Did you take, did you take a reading?
No. The readings aren't going to, are not time-dependent. So I, you know, I might have heard his truck, but the fact is that it's not, it, it, the truck, I did, the readings I took, I did take trucks at the Hennaker. Okay, I did do that. And at the street, they don't, you just can't hear them at that distance. It's, it's down to background levels, you know, which was in this, like 60.
Yeah, I think one of the concerns is ambient noise at 4:00 in the morning is different than 3:00 in the afternoon.
Well, and the, but the other interesting thing I want to bring out, if we're talking about the report, was they had an office on the property, which was 190 feet away from the pump. I went in there and I measured the sound in the office, and then I measured the sound with the window shut. With the window open, it was as, it was compared to just normal conversation. I could not hear that pump because of the, just office sounds. When I closed the, the window, it dropped to what would be considered a whisper. I had people be, you know, quiet down in the office so I could get a good reading. So with the window down, you couldn't hear, not, you could, not only could you hear that pump, but the sound in the office was what would be considered to be a whisper. Or between a whisper and normal conversation, but it was down, you know, was, wasn't anything you could identify as having come from the pump.
I have one final question. If it was an underground storage tank, where would the pump be?
If there was, if it was an underground storage tank?
Which he originally-
There would, the, the pump would be on grade, which I don't, you know, may or may not necessarily affect the sound. Offloading from, at an underground tank, there is no pump because it's a gravity drop, but you would have, there would be a pump for filling the tanks. The thing that I think that helps these pumps is that they're surrounded, with the, with the one I measured anyway, it's, it's surrounded by tanks which sort of, you know, trap the sound, and then it's recessed about five feet below grade. So it's a, it's not, it doesn't, there's not a direct line of sight from the, from the pump to exposure.
How many trucks do you have now? Will you be increasing the number if you get this permit?
I may be able to reduce them, but it's all about growth.
He spends two hours a day driving to Quincy.
Per load? Per load, not per day.
The only thing that could increase, the number of trucks would be increasing is business. And that's, that's not necessarily, you know, directly affected by having a, having a tank. You have to, you have to, you know, earn business, advertise it, and then keep it.
Do you have any pictures of this facility or what it looks like? Do you have any pictures of this facility or what it looks like?
I did submit pictures, but maybe it was the planning board.
It is.
It was the planning board? I'm sorry that I didn't bring that. I mean, I obviously can bring them up on my phone, but I have plenty of pictures on this phone, but if there was a way of demonstrating... I'm sorry, I thought about it and then I just said, no, I thought that it was part of the original application.
There's a tree line in the back of the property. Is that how far back it will be or will you be taking down some of the trees?
To the rear of the property, the trees that I own are already down. That tree line belongs to the town.
Any vote possible?
Fine.
Well, we're going to open it up to the audience. Can you state your name, please?
Karen David, C6 Paddle, Bosworth Road. I have a few concerns. I have a petition here against the building of this and I'm going to just read my information. So petitions to be signed by people which they did sign. We, the town residents and taxpayers of Halifax, are asking the Board of Selectmen, Town Boards, and any other agency that require approval of this project to not deny the special permit and any other proposals put for, from current brothers oils or their representatives until they change their location to an industrial zone property away from residents as it is a violation of our existing bylaws. Our existing bylaw that this is impacting is 167 dash line. Prohibited uses in any district, no use will be permitted, which will produce a nuisance or hazard, confider or explosion, toxic or corrosive fumes, gas, smoke, odors, obnoxious dust or vapor, harmful radioactivity, offensive noise or vibration, flashes, objectionable equipment, or electrical interference, which may affect or interfere the normal use and peaceful enjoyment of any property, structure, or dwelling in the neighborhood. There's also number two, material safety data sheet that Mr. Silver will speak on a little bit later. Precautionary statements and this interior, I'm sorry, Justin's going to speak on that, but it does, if inhaled, it is harmful if inhaled, causes skin and eye irritation, suspected of causing cancer, may be fatal if swallowed and injures airways, may cause damage to organs, throat, or lung, or repeated exposure, toxic to aquatic light, involve lasting effects. I have signatures on the petition that I will give to the board. I also want to make a mention that this is in a historic district. I'm not sure if anyone's ever brought that up.
It's not a historic district.
It is, I can take a picture. Excuse me, let me finish.
There's the curtains.
Let me finish. So I drove by there last night and there's a sign. It says, "Entering right in front of this property, entering historical district." I also have a picture on my phone that I'd be glad to share with the board and it's a picture of a home, okay, right across the street that is the oldest house in the historical district. And also what I'd like to mention is that right behind this property, this is proposed for the town Housing, Board of Housing Authority, owns 9.58 acres, which has been slated and de-restricted from the housing authority, which was proposed for our senior center housing and also our senior center and elderly housing. If this is, if this puts board, we have to evacuate one half mile, okay, radius if something was to happen. We as taxpayers do not want this because we are the ones that would be the burden, okay, in our tax dollars if something was to happen. We do not have the staff on our town, fire department to handle such a, you know, if something happened, we can't handle it. So those are my reasons and people that have signed the petition that I've given to you.
Anybody else that wants to speak? Can you state your name, please?
I'm Justin Silver, 50, Clydeville, Bosworth Road.
Yep.
My background in public safety, hazard mitigation, what I found about this project, I'd like you to come to this meeting tonight and discuss some of my concerns, particularly with the storage and more particularly with transportation of the fuel. 50,000 gallons of hazmat being stored 200 feet from neighborhoods. This is a bulk plant being stored next to a neighborhood. That's what the engineer called it, a bulk plant. And it's my understanding that the trucks would be leaving the facility full of fuel on Route 106, where now it's my understanding that they're leaving the facility most likely empty so they can go fill up in Quincy. So the traffic study aside from the transportation risk, the transportation risk here is that those trucks are going to be coming out of 106 loaded with fuel and turning onto 106 loaded with fuel. There's your major spill hazmat. In the event that there's an accident on Route 106 close to the intersection of 105, right? So rather than speaking my own opinion, personal experience, the Department of Transportation Emergency Response Guide, which with fire department, police department, town would use to guide them to mitigate a spill or a fire at this bulk plant. The following text of notes. Large spill, 150 feet in all directions and fire department reserves right to go 300 meters in all directions. The following text, 1,000 feet downwind from a large spill, perpendicular direction. So solidly wedge, large spill involving one of the trucks or at the plant. That's about 30 homes that would need to be evacuated by our fire and police departments. Everybody follow so far? Furthermore, if we're talking about a fire facility and I appreciate the engineer giving his opinion on, you know, NFA guidelines and fire, a little more familiar, but a fire involving a truck that is carrying fuel, the fire department would prefer the ERG. ERG says initial isolation distance. Consider an initial evacuation of one half mile from the tanker truck that would be involved in the fire. That means all Clydeville Bosworth Road, Dearborn, Stony Bear, Fessinville, Cranberry Drive, Christmas Freeland, dozens of homes on Thompson, Plunk Street. And as Karen stated, potentially senior housing is what we would be dealing with. That's what we'd be asking of our three persons, staff, fire department to evacuate dozens and dozens and dozens of homes while trying to suppress a fire. They don't have adequate firefighting home technology because fireside home is a carcinogen and environmental hazard much similar to diesel fuel, which would have been spilled on a fire at a point, right? So this project, we cannot safely accommodate this project in our town. Never mind in an area that's zoned business, a couple hundred feet from where my kids live, right? This proposed project belongs in an industrial location away from homes, away from children, away from a cranberry park, away from a senior housing. It doesn't belong on the street. It's just not the right location for it. And I ask the zoning board to act decisively to follow our existing zoning laws in the interest of public health and safety, deny this special permit. I thank you for your time and closing to the end of the call. Appreciate it very much.
Anybody else wants to speak?
I would like to speak, Steve Adams.
Name?
Steve Adams, 22 Cranberry Drive. Those folks spoke very eloquently with lots of facts and I'm welcome for that. My conversation here will be a little more grass. You've been a business since 1979. You said that that is 42 years and suddenly there's a change here and you want us to believe that your own trucks will be the only two trucks. And then you said maybe just one now to use these tanks. I have to say that that is not truly accurate and that really cannot ever happen, right? It is not sensible to believe that statement that we are putting literally tens of thousands, possibly even more, into a project and not expand one's business? And again, a change of 42 years in the making? That doesn't make sense. And you know what? In my experience, if things don't make sense, that means they, they're not true, right? I totally agree with what they had said a moment ago on the Zoom meeting, which I know you all were a part of. The owner of Greeley's Oil is on there and he told you, and he told me, that you're going to have trucks show up when they show up. He said 4:00 AM to midnight. Guess what? I don't care if it's 4:02 AM, that's going to wake people up. I live four houses down from this and I'm only four houses down, but there's people that literally live right next door, particularly if you put a senior housing plant or facility right behind them, right? So this all boils down to, do we believe him? That he is looking to put all this money and infrastructure into a 42-year-old business to kind of downsize his business? Or do we think that more realistically it's to upsize his business? I would venture to say it's the latter, which then brings the traffic concern. I looked on the map downstairs, he has 1.14 acres of land. You tell me how you're going to fit two tanker trucks if they show up at the same time, which the owner of Greeley's Oil said wouldn't happen unequivocally. He said it's going to happen where you're going to have tanker trucks backed up on Route 106. So these folks in front of you who have done a lot of talking today will tell you till they're blue in the face that that's not their plan. Guess what? Their plans will change, I can almost guarantee you, and then suddenly we're going to have a traffic issue right before 105. As I exit Cranberry Drive, you know, sometimes it really is hard to get out in my SUV, which goes a heck of a lot faster than their tanker trucks. There's been an accident right in front of Greeley's before, it already hit their fence. There's tons of accidents at the intersection of 105 and 106. So if the decision here is to jeopardize not only the neighborhood, but also the traffic flow through town, give them the special permit. But if in your heart you know that something doesn't add up here and I would tell you it doesn't add up, then please deny their request.
Anybody else wants to speak? Mr. Greeley?
I would imagine most of the people in here know I run over that group of people. I have a tank, it's 35,000 gallons, designed by Mr. Greeley. He did a very good job on it. I know it's going to be correct, it's going to work out nice. I have to disagree with him on the noise level. I'll tell you, when that pump is streaming away coming 600 gallons ahead of it, it's noisy. You can't talk next to that pump. The other thing I have to disagree with him, I have trucks of all 7:00 in the morning. Say, hey, I need a tanker in here today. They'll show up anytime. They'll be here at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, anytime of the day. And you have to accept that, well, you can't say no. You can't come between midnight and 4:00 in the morning. They're just going to check you up and say, no, policy. You will get loads in the middle of the night and those pumps will be, all right? That's all I can tell you. I have three acres and it's still a little bit difficult for my trucks, my tanker trucks to come in, turn around and add you. Be careful, that elevator truck, truck getting around you near. I have a couple of appointments I'd like to make. Gas stations get 10,000 gallons of gasoline delivered. That trailer holds 10,000 gallons, actually it holds 12,000, but Massachusetts, they carry 10,000. You're looking for the tank that's five times as big as a trailer delivering to your local gas station. They're big, they're ugly. I had permits on underground storage at my home in 847 when I bought that property. I couldn't do that to my neighbor. I turned around and said, I gotta bite the bullet. I'm going to buy this industrial lake. And I did, I put my bulk plant down there, it was no more than a half mile up. That's where a bulk plant would stand.
Yes.
Follow us, Mr. Greeley. Mr. Greeley, since he's looking to downsize, what would be the proponent of him coming and buying oil from you? Doing away with all of this?
The comments need to come to the chairs. The comments need to come to the chair. We can't have people, because this will devolve quickly.
I forgot something.
Go ahead.
Before I have my bulk point, I only can't since fuel, all right, which is right on 27. You can do that, cost you three bucks, all right? They'll charge you by the gallon. You can load in Brockton, you can load in Toddler. There are plenty of places where you can, you can load for me. Nothing in my regulations that said I can't have Turkey Load, Kingston Oil, Alvin Hollis, any of those guys loading my plant. I choose not to, but there's nothing in the rulebook that I can do. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanted to...
Can you state your name, please?
Oh, sorry. Amy Altrich, speaking as a planning board member to report the planning board vote. There was four people at the meeting, one had to recuse themselves and then there was three of us that voted. The reason that I voted no was because, because we didn't go to return radiuses and I felt that where we go to return radiuses is to get on and off the street for a marijuana dispenser every down the street. I thought that it would only be prudent to do so for a large trailer of carrying oil. And we didn't do that and therefore I do not view it as proper site plan fully done and it didn't, that's why I said no. It was a 2-0, I'm sorry, 2-1-1 vote.
Anybody else wants to speak? State your name, please.
Kevin Kane, I live in 96 Cranberry Drive. I worked on clean harness for 41 years. I worked on a tag farm, offload trucks, loading. You're always going to have a spill, a hose is going to burst. You can have all the alarms you want on, it's not working properly. If he has a spill down there, good luck. The EPA will live on this property, the DEP. And it's inevitable, it's going to happen. There's hoses bursting in trucks, there's nothing to stop this endeavor. So you're only asking for trouble and I, no.
Mr. Greeley, how many times have you had a spill? Mr. Greeley? How long you've had your tanks up?
My tanks were built in 2001.
Okay, how many times you've had a spill?
I've never had a spill.
So the design of the, the project was, is fine with you, right?
Greeley does a great job of designing the facility.
So what is, what is the...
It can happen.
It can happen?
It can happen.
And if they designed the same system or better system than what you have right now, which everything has been improved?
Well, it really hasn't been too many changes. I would explain very closely and Mr. Silver, I would, the only thing I have to say is my plan is big and I believe...
But it's a safe system.
Oh, yeah, it's a safe system.
Thank you.
There's plenty of alarms, the whole night has.
Thank you.
But I don't think these people realize how big that facility is. It's 35,000.
Again, Steve Adams, 22 Cranberry. Forgive my ambrogous attitude here. You can't ask someone's company business if they ever had a spill. I'm no idiot, obviously you know that too. So that's just, they need to lie in conversation.
You just think everybody's lying. People want to work on that.
That's the experience that I would get into. However, my second question is what is the plan? I know there's a plan that is very well done for the development and the build out of the structure. My question is, what is the plan moving forward of maintenance, of making sure we're testing tanks more than just, you know, the EPA or whomever, I don't know, I'm in here to this, showing up? What is your written plan that you can show us that says, here's what I'm going to do moving forward every year, every six months, whatever appropriate, to make sure that my facility is still up?
We'll get you the answer. Let me ask the engineer. What are the plans for moving forward with this thing?
Well, part of the state fire marshal's approval includes we have to declare which national standard we will be following in order to, as our inspection protocol. And in this case, these are shop fabricated tanks. And so the state fire marshal will require, once every, that, that, he goes in and he inspects these tanks on a monthly basis, you know, puts eyes on the tanks, if there's paint failure or, you know, if there's any leaks and, you know, those are very rare because these tanks last a long time. And then every five years, a third-party inspector, which I do for the whole, I do all over the state of Massachusetts, will go there and make sure of a couple of things. One is that he's following that declared standard. We're going to make sure that, you know, he's, has records of, you know, that have to stay for the life of the tank of these, of these in-house inspections. And then we'll also do an inspection to see if, you know, judge on how the house, what kind of housekeeping is going on. Now these facilities, we don't use dreaded, we don't use dreaded connections anymore. Everything's flanged and so they don't leak. It's really pretty easy to keep this place clean. So in that regard, you know, that's... To address the hose bursting, the only hose that's used in this facility is under a vacuum. I understand, I do Clean Harbors, I use Clean Harbors for a lot of my work and Clean Harbors... Harbors hires us to do their design work, so I'm very familiar. They use a lot of pressurized hoses, which, because the truck, if the truck comes in with a pump on the truck, then yes, you have to be very careful about the hose, you have to be careful anyway, but what will happen, if his hose fails, then it'll suck in air. And then on the, on the, on the filling side, there is no hose. Everything is done by a loading arm, and that loading arm has a dead man switch on it, so that if he, if somebody releases the dead man, it stops. And all of that's taking place over this, you know, containment structure. And then we have a canopy over top of the containment, over top of where the trucks park, and over the pumps, so that they're, they're protected, they'll be protected from, from, you know, rain exposure. So we try to do everything, you know, we try to design, because I, I do those inspections, and I want to come back, and I want to see a tank that's, you know, in good shape, so he doesn't know where I, he may not know where I put in my conservative things, you know, that's not something typically, I, you know, we, engineers hold that stuff sort of in their vest, you know? But I haven't gotten any impression from Mr. Curtis, Curtin, that he's wanting to, you know, we're not wanting to skimp at all, this is, this is, that wasn't on my support.
Specifically to those points, right? So there's a house on one side and a house on the other. House across 105, neighborhood's across 106. All of those things that you're talking about are there because there could be an issue, right? I, I wouldn't put any of that on my, the front door of my shed, because I don't think there's going to be a hazardous waste spill on my shed, so I guess the question...
Do you heat your house by oil?
What's that?
Do you heat your house by oil?
Yeah.
Where's your oil tank?
In the basement.
So you have it inside the house?
I guess so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my question is, when they, so, all of those structures are there, and you put them in place in case there's a problem, which means if there's a problem, it's kind of a big deal, right? And I think the question is, not that those things shouldn't exist, right, because they do, but I guess the argument that they're making, which I, like, to feel comfortable loading for this, I'd need to feel comfortable, there's a good argument for this, but like, if, if, if all those, if all of those things are reasonably, a reasonable expense to spend, right, because those all cost money, a reasonable expense to spend, I don't need to do that where they put in the oil to my house, I don't think anybody has that, right? But on this they do, and they do very typically do that. So I guess the question is, this is a pretty residential neighborhood, so I kind of am still, and you mentioned that area, East Bridgewater, which I think is still kind of spread out and kind of industrial out there.
There's a house in the front, yeah.
Okay, is it their house?
I don't know if it belongs with the...
Yeah, so I guess the, is this typical? It doesn't seem, this seems unusual.
It is, it's not, you know, typical, but you'd have to define typical. We design them in wherever zoning permits it, and there are times where...
And that's the question, right? So the question, if it was industrial, I don't think there would be a special permit that's necessary, but in the business district, which the business district is right there on the other side of that tank, right? It becomes residential. So the question is, now the five of us have to figure out whether or not this is something to approve a special permit.
Are those, I, I don't, I'm not, are you sure those abutters are not in the business zone also?
So I'm looking at it right here, the business zone literally ends at the back end of that tank.
Okay, I, I know, I remember looking at it, it does, it goes across the street and down, and I don't have it on top of my head.
Yeah, I think it's like 106, that whole area, but like, right behind it, the, the town land that they've been talking about is residential. So if I lived in the house right behind it...
Well, that, that Hennaker facility had a house on the other side of it, and had houses, had a house across the street, because as you saw in my report, I took measurements of the, of the pump level at those. And, and all of the ones that he named, like those Alvin Hollis facilities, they're all in, you know, in, in rural or areas where you're going to find houses near, fairly close proximity. So, you know, we heat, because we heat, because all these houses heat with oil, you know, you, you, you're not going to, you, you, the oil has to be stored somewhere nearby. I mean, we have gas stations in residential areas, and, and if you want to know what happens when a 10,000 gallon tank of gasoline spills, it goes down the drain, and manholes start blowing up wherever it went to. I did expert witness in this, on case that, let's do that. So whereas, yeah, 10,000 gallons might sound like a lot, it's, it's not gasoline, which, which we live with, there's Cumberland Farms on every corner, I do, I go to their public hearings as well, so I, you know, I'm perfectly familiar with, with the arguments.
So Mr. Chairman, can I ask a couple questions?
Go ahead. So, acting chairman.
Good, okay.
So, you know, anybody runs out of oil in the middle of winter, he's your hero. I mean, so I'm kind of, you know, we all have to admit that, we'd be so happy if he showed up, it has to come from somewhere. That being said, we're looking for a special permit for a light industrial use, correct? Well, we have a definition in our bylaw of light industrial use. Light industrial use, an industrial enterprise such as manufacturing, storage, processing, fabrication, packaging, and assembly, that does not create a nuisance from noise, vibration, smoke, glare, radiation, flashing, or other emissions adjacent to the properties, adjacent to properties. Further said, light industrial use shall not be hazardous to public safety or health or have noxious or toxic waste byproducts. So I kind of feel we're right on the, with having houses there, I mean, we're, we're right on the edge of a knife here, so that's kind of what I'm having an issue with. And as far as storage tanks in the house, you know, you're going to have a minor drip, you're going to smell it, you're not going to have a catastrophic, catastrophic failure, I just don't think that was a fair analogy.
I think it, I think it's, I think it's a good analogy, and I'll tell you why, because this, this tank is not going to leak. I, I, I do, I, I, you know, whether or not I, you know, I believe by people in the audience, I inspect tanks all the time. I'm, I'm doing two tomorrow, and then I'm doing a couple on Thursday. We're in that five-year cycle with the state fire marshal, so I'm hitting it real hard this year. And there's, I never find a horizontal tank leaking, it never happens. Now, if they're riveted, because they're going back to 1930s, on a rare occasion, I've noticed a stain around a rivet. It's not a leak, it's a stain, it means that it's coming out so slowly that it's, it's, it's waxing before it can get, escape the tank. In your base, and, and, you know, we're, they're being filled out in the open air, so, so there's, there is a, you know, the vapors, the, the, you know, the vent of the tank is releasing what's inside the tank as the tank is filling. That's happening at your house, right, as you're, you're, except that that's right under your window, that fence right under your window. Most of your tanks, these, you know, you don't, how much, how much oil do you need to be a hazard? 300 gallons in a house if they were to ignite, and it's, how far is it from wooden structure? So it is a fair analogy, because, because this is much safer. You ask the fire department, they don't have any problems with these bulk plants, they never do, there's, you, you can Google incidences. Now if you don't understand, you know, everybody can Google and find a truck that turned over, but you'll always find that it doesn't happen when someone's turning in and out of their property. It happens when they're on a clover leaf, when they, you know, they're going a little bit faster than they're ready to, and that's where, that's where it's rolling over. That's where this facility is going to keep them off of the clover leaves, because he doesn't have to drive into, you know, these, these faraway facilities. I, I think that it's just, I understand the neighbor's thing, but this is, he's zoned, he's zoned for this with a special permit, and...
Well, that, that's my question, is I don't know if he is, because I don't think, he may not, in my mind, I'm still thinking about it, qualified for light industrial use. Don't forget, our bylaws, which the town votes for, the residents vote for, we don't make the bylaws, the town makes the bylaws, the residents. That's our definition. Another town where you built another tank might have another definition, so we have to go by what we have.
Karen, April 66, Cladwell, Boxer. So the dip, I just go with it, and average size of a household tank is 275 gallons, and they do not fill the entire tank when they come to deliver your oil, they normally only put in about 250 to 260. So there's a big difference between 260 gallons versus 50,000 gallons. And if anyone, if anyone in this room knows, or, you know, the people on Cladwell, Boxer and Cranberry, you'll see people bike riding or walking with their family, kids and that, and they go from one neighborhood all the way behind that curtain oil, all the way around Cranberry and back around. And that's just not a safety environment, there's just so many car accidents with it and right in front of this place, right in front of that business, right? And as you spoke sort of at the end, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but you're right, it's in our bylaws, we voted on these bylaws, and we can't revert from these bylaws. And I know that this gentleman is very nice and is proposing this for him, and it might be good construction, but that's his job, that's his business to put this forward to us. We're saying, this is not what we want in our town, we bought our houses, we put our families here, and this is not what we need.
I have a couple of comments here. One, the Titanic wasn't supposed to sink either, guess what it did? And there's a reason to your point, that you put the infrastructure around, things happen unexpectedly every single day. And I just have to personally tell you, about five years ago on a very cold day, I was foolish and ran out of oil, I had small children and a very angry wife. Guess who I called? Mr. Curtin, who was four houses down, and I explained the situation, and he did not deliver my oil. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention too, he's not always the hero in dark night period.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Mary Gramm, 98, Cladwell, Boxer Road. I have two different questions. So how much of his one and a half acre piece of land are those tanks going to take up? And how much leftover will be to turn around? Because I know we had some stuff, we did our second, even just having a big, huge machine come into our, we have less than an acre, just about an acre. That was a lot of motion, a lot of stuff on the street, a lot of stuff going here, there, and everywhere. I can't imagine if he has more than one truck trying to get in from 106, there's going to be any clearance without them to turn around and got another one going behind him, without approaching another car or something. Well, I just don't get, the traffic on 106 is that I'm not just going to a lawnmower, I can't imagine going in out of an oil thing.
Would you like to explain that?
Which one, the...
The turnaround and the one and a half.
How much space of that, of his properties are those tanks going to take up, of the acre and a half?
Well, I figure an acre and a half is what, about 60, 70,000 square feet, without doing the math, whatever, you know, 42 times 1.5, so that's about 60 something pounds, 60 something pounds, no, no, that's the, I'm just finding, I'm approaching it, like, what is the area property, right?
46.9.
1,000.
The lot size is 46.9.
Okay, I, I'm going by what I heard, so it's not an acre and a half?
No.
Okay, well, the, the containment dike is what we're talking about.
What is the containment size?
Probably about 50, I want to say about 40 feet.
40 by what?
40 by, 40 by 50, you know, somewhere in that range.
That's 200 square feet.
Yeah.
So how much area do the tanks take up?
40 by 50.
That's not 200, that's 2,000.
No, that's 2,000 square feet.
Yeah, probably a 2,000 to 3,000, you know, in that range, yeah.
So a lot.
But it's up against, it's a good...
Can you show, can you show that on your poster board, just so that they can see?
Only 2,000 square feet.
Doesn't have the dimensions on it.
The dimensions were kind of set in my plan, that's what we did.
You're doing great. You're doing great, this is done. There you go, perfect, good time.
Just can you show us where, where the tanks are going to sit on the lot and explain it to people?
If you'd like to point it out.
It's upside down. It's upside down, bud.
So the, the area for turning is, is back here, so they'll, they'll probably get a pull in this side, back in, get into this position, or they'll come around this way, however they decide on building. But this is, this is, these are the tanks in this square right here, this is where the truck, this, this, the trucks can drive on this, so this is all, you know, usable space, and...
What is that back building, the square that looks gray in the back?
This here?
No, back, up top, right there.
That's the existing structure.
It's a building?
Yes, so everything is happening behind it, this is through the street, and all of the truck turning, you know, if, if, like, if for some reason it wasn't working, it's just, it's not going to involve this, it's going to make it work back here. It's a bigger, you know...
How much is the distance of...
They're recording that time.
That doesn't look like very big piece of land.
This here?
Yeah, that is.
Above the top of my head, it's about 25 feet.
How wide is it?
This can't be like...
We're going to...
So can I, I just have one other question? Can I, I just have one other question? So we, we have in the past, I know we're looking to, and we watch this in half hours, we need the tax revenue, we need whatever, we're going to go through all of this, and he's going to put all this money in to not bring his business to give us less tax money, less revenue for our police and fire and everything else to work hard. I just don't see how that...
We got, we haven't finished with this applicant, yeah, we have, we need more information, so we're going to continue the meeting until next month, and we're going to ask for more details of what he's going to do, then we'll go from there.
And please bring the diagrams.
What's that?
If they can bring the diagrams about meeting with pictures.
Yes, we're going to...
I actually brought the Heiner, if you're, if you... If this, so this is, this is the facility that I did the sound study on. You know, this, this here is a bigger tank than what is being proposed, is a 40,000 gallon tank, so it's going to be about, you know, three quarters of the size of this. These are pretty close to the size, these are both 10,000 gallon tanks. This is the pump, it's inside of this containment dike. I'm sorry, I just...
No, that's my comment.
And, and, and then there's the trucks on this pad, and so I, when I did my sound readings anyway, it hit right at the pump. I thought it was interesting that, that pump is not as loud as a lawnmower, by far, you know, so we all did the lawnmowers all day, you know, in the summertime, because our windows were open. And, and then this is the truck, this is, this is the household, right, I'm showing, I'm not showing a transport truck on here, but the transport truck sits on this pad.
Do you know what the dimensions are of the whole facility?
Well, I'm estimating, I, I, to be honest with you, it's, they're, they're 10 foot diameter tanks, so 10, 20. Let's say it's 40 feet, meaning the dike, 40 feet by about maybe 45 feet.
But then you have the tanks themselves.
I go ahead, use different numbers, but, you know, it has to be worked out, but that's the general, just...
Inside the wall.
The dike, one, five, four minutes?
No, not yet. What's the pleasure of the board, what would you like it to...
I think we got to get more information, there's a lot here.
Well, until we get more information, we'll, we'll have to meet next month, we'll have to continue until next month.
Do you know what lot coverage is?
We would like to go on an onsite and visit the facility.
So I, I think, I think from my perspective, and I don't know if anybody else has, so what I think we'd like to see, I think we should probably do an onsite visit of this property, so I don't know if there's a, when's our next meeting? August something or other? August 9. Yeah, so maybe we want to do it the 7th? Sure everybody's really down with it, Saturday in August, I don't know if you're...
I'll be here, I work.
I can't make August Saturday.
Chairman, can we also ask them to produce...
I, I don't, I don't know if the team really can make, no, can make this turn, I would like to see the traffic.
Can we have a plan of how these trucks are going to go in and out?
Well, if you, if you require that for the next year...
And we'll find out whether this, this place is in a historical district or not, because it was brought, because it was brought up. And right now we're going to ask, we're going to go on to a, do an onsite inspection.
Yeah, so we'll do the onsite on the Saturday, the 9th, at 9, right? And we can have a motion for that. But here's, here's, I think, oh, here, it's hard to hear because everybody's talking, but...
Everybody, shh, please.
Excuse us? We have a...
The, what I think we're looking for answers to is exactly where the driveway will be, what the dimensions are of the above the whole tank, of the whole thing.
I'm checking the lot coverage also.
Yeah, what the percentage is, because we have a limit of 25%, so there can't be any more coverage than 25%. So there can't be any more coverage than twenty-five percent on a lot. So we need to make sure that we meet that, that bylaw. Um, I don't know, is there any other stuff that could you go? Yeah?
Who wants to make the motion for an onsite inspection?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to, uh, continue. Yeah, I'll make a motion, well, I think they can just schedule it, right? They don't have to make a motion.
Motion for an onsite.
I'll make a motion for an onsite visit for petition number nine thirty-eight for August seventh at nine AM. You're okay with that?
August seventh, oh, okay.
Yeah, that's just like the visit.
Yes, the year, August ninth.
Well, we're going to do that, I think, sorry.
Okay.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. What's your vote? Hi. You?
Hi.
Hi.
Can I say yes? All in favor, five to zero. We're going to have an onsite. And we want to continue the, uh, meeting to, uh, August ninth.
I'll make a motion to continue petition nine thirty-eight to August ninth.
Second.
At seven, seven oh five? What do we get on the agenda over there? I'm asking you to a lot on that laptop. It's okay, you want me to say seven fifteen? Seven thirty? Okay. Okay, so let's do that. So August ninth, motion to continue petition nine thirty-eight to August ninth at seven fifteen PM.
Second.
Are we on for second? Uh, Jerry, uh, second. Favorite?
Hi. 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 Hi.
Yes, all in favor, five to zero. Motion passed. We're on for next week, next month.
There they go.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Over there?
That's the Gibson.
I guess you're right.
That's Gibson, that's Oak Street.
Uh, yeah, you can send Arlonne and take it.
Gibson.
Oh yeah, the house across the street.
We'll find, we'll find out, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to go. We have to, we have to do what.
Well, they're going to have to come back and answer that, so. All right, what the heck are we doing here?
Nine forty-four, petition nine forty-four.
Uh, the Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven oh five in the great hall on the application by David and Laura Gibbons to appeal the building inspector's denial of a building permit. You guys could just take your conversations outside, it's hard to hear in here. Uh, building inspector's denial of a building permit for a wood burning stove proposed to be located at seventy Oak Street, Halifax, Mass. O two three three eight. Said property is owned by David and Laura Gibbons of seventy Oak Street, Halifax, Mass. On, as shown on assessor's map thirty-four, lot ninety-three, title reference book fifty-one oh five seven, page one twenty. The applicants are seeking to appeal the building inspector's denial of a building permit for a wood burning stove as their application states, quote, "We are seeking a permit for a licensed contractor to install a modern wood stove which adheres to all Massachusetts codes and regulations as well as all federal guidelines into our home. The wood stove will be replacing our existing pellet stove. The wood stove will be vented using metal vestus pipe out of the house. The reason is because the wood stove will be more efficient and not require electricity," end quote. The building inspector's denial states, quote, there's a lot of quotes in here. This is great. Uh, quote, "As per seven eighty CMR one oh five three one, if the building permit application does not conform to the requirements of the state building code and all pertinent laws, a permit cannot be issued. The owner of seventy Oak Street shall apply with the zoning board of appeals to rectify and remediate any and all zoning violations," end quote. The area is zone residential and petition is number nine forty-four.
All right. Mr. Gibbons and Mrs. Gibbons, what would you like to, what would you like to? Tell us what you want to do and what.
Well, we, as, as we, as it said, uh, we have an existing pellet stove. Unfortunately, the previous owners had this beautiful cook, wood fired cook stove and on a great big hearth in the cellar. And they decided to replace that with a pellet stove. And, uh, so they got rid of the, the wood stove and, um, they put a pellet stove in. And, um, aside from it not really being for us, I don't want to knock pellet stoves. They're just, they're really not for us. Um, you know, you have to store the pellets, they've got to stay inside dry somewhere. It's kind of a hassle. It also fills our house with smoke when we use it, so it's kind of less than ideal. Currently, if we want to heat the house with wood, we have to use the fireplace, which most people know when you use a fireplace, you, you go through an awful lot of wood. Uh, most, it takes a while for everything to heat up and most of the heat's just getting lost. So we figured, um, replace the wood stove, replace a pellet stove with a wood stove. Um, and we still get to use our fireplace for, you know, the ambiance and we wouldn't lose that. Having a, having a big stove sticking out of our fireplace wasn't for us. We'd rather have one where there's a place built for it. Um, and so right now it's vented out into our sunroom and then it takes a ninety degree and goes out the wall of the sunroom and it ends there. And, uh, when we were looking at the house, we were sure that that couldn't possibly be like up to code. So we, we had it inspected and, you know, they came and inspected it and it passed, which I was surprised with, but I figured, well, whatever, it's, it's passive, it burns my house down. Someone's inspect, inspected it already. But anyways, we, we've used it and just, it's not for us. We want to replace it. So the, well, I mean, I, I think that's, that's mainly, that's our, that's, that's pretty much just where we're at. Um, there are, obviously there are some other. There is apparently a misunderstanding.
Yeah, picture of the stove there.
The stove itself, yeah. It's, uh, from Plymouth fireplace. Yeah, we do, we're hoping we don't need any of it. Yeah. We've had some unfortunate issues trying to get this stove. It just hasn't gone very smoothly for us. There's been some miscommunications, a few misunderstandings and, uh, it's been very difficult for us. It's, yeah, so anyways, we're, it's right there. Here it is, it's that only one that's like shining in cardboard.
No, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just continue to knock.
I'm very wrong. Um, but yeah, we're, it's from Plymouth fireplace. There's, um, they recommended us to a local licensed installer who does these things all the time. Um, and he was actually the one who applied for the permit, uh, and, and was denied initially. And it seems to be some confusion as to whether it was denied because the permit was filled out incorrectly, which it wasn't, um, or if there's a zoning issue, uh, which there isn't.
Well, how much firewood are you storing on your property?
Um, well, we do have firewood. I would say approximately twenty cord. Um, so enough for a couple of winters, not really that much.
It's not, the, the wood that you have on your property is not for sale?
No.
You're not doing it for?
No. No, actually, we, um, we use a lot more, we use, excuse me, we use firewood for a lot more than just heating our home. Um, we like to have fires outside all the time. We have a barbecue pit. Couple of years ago, we cooked a whole hog. That took a fair amount of firewood because you had a separate box. You got to keep the, the wood burning in the separate box. So you get a nice bed of coals and you're just adding the coals. You have a smoker, fireplace, like I said, which, but that does heat our home.
Firewood strictly for your own use?
That's correct.
Not for resale?
No, it is not.
Any members of the board would?
So you're appealing his decision, right?
Yes, we want a wood stove.
So his decision is that you can't ever have a wood stove? Or is the way you were setting it up?
Okay, so I'm, I'm happy that, 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 exactly. This is, this is, so it's taken us a little while to figure out that his position is that there is a zoning issue on our property, which is the, which is the firewood itself. And therefore, we will not get any permits for anything, to do anything.
I don't, that's not what the his letter says.
Yeah, it does. It says because there's a zone, he, what he's saying, the code that he's citing is saying that if the applicant who wishes to obtain a permit for whatever it is has a zoning issue, then he's got the right to, to refuse that permit until such zoning issue's been cleared up.
What is the zoning issue?
The zoning issue is the firewood. That I have firewood.
So if you had bought firewood from, uh, somebody, then you, you put it on your property, you couldn't have that?
That's my, that was, that was my point. That's what I thought. And I asked, you know, is there a limit to how much firewood I'm allowed to have? Is there a particular way that you want me to keep it? Do I need to split it to a certain size? Is there like a?
I've seen a lot of denial letters from Rob Pickering, right? Every single time he denied someone on a zoning violation, he mentioned exactly what zone, but zoning.
Yeah, well, I asked him multiple times what it is specific. Is there a specific amount of wood that I'm allowed to have?
So he said, he specifically said it was违法.
Well, he's saying that.
Here it says, if, if a building permit application does not conform to the requirements of the state building code and all pertinent laws, a permit cannot be issued.
Yeah, that might not be the only one. Uh, is there another one?
Yeah.
Where's the, where's the one where he says?
There's equipment on the property and things like that.
Yeah, so he didn't say.
Are you a tree fetter?
Uh, I do tree work, yes.
I do tree work.
Yeah. So I think that's where maybe there's some confusion coming in. I don't think he quite understands.
You run your business out of your house?
No.
Here it is.
And the only, um.
Do you?
The only trees you bring back are trees for personal use?
Correct. Uh, we bring back a fraction of the material that we remove from customers' properties. We don't have one.
You don't have one?
We don't need one.
Where do you store your equipment?
We, we don't, Gibbons Tree Service doesn't own any equipment. We personally own a very, we own a very small amount of equipment. We have a chipper and a truck, my truck.
Where do you store that?
I park my truck at home. Where do you park your truck?
Your chipper at home?
Yeah, it's my chipper. We have three acres that we, by the way. Yeah, they're registered in this town in my name. They're registered to me, I pay excess taxes on them in my name.
Is that a bucket truck?
No. Nope, it's just a fourteen thousand GVW truck. It's like, like a big pickup. Small truck.
Do you have a business address?
Yes, it's, um.
Seventy-four Summerton, Kansas City. All of our mail goes there.
It's, it's where, it's our business address. When we incorporated, we, before we moved to Halifax, um, we, we were doing things a little bit looser and, and, um, we were trying to tighten up and organize everything and streamline things and we thought it'd be appropriate to have a business address.
Is there anything at that business address?
Uh, we don't keep any equipment at that address, if that's what you're asking.
Do you have an office or anything?
Nope, just a place to get mail for the business.
Like a post office box or?
It, it is a post office box. Um, but I think, so the way that we do business, um, we don't, we don't recycle material. We don't sell chips, we don't store chips. Um, we don't have lots of bucket trucks and big pieces of equipment. Um, we don't do any of the recycling or processing and of tree work.
Question, you go on a job.
Correct, yeah.
And you do the job. What do you do with the, with the trees that you cut down?
Well, that's a good question, yeah. So, um, we remove tens of thousands of yards of material from customers' properties every year. Um, we, we don't have the equipment or the room to process that type of material on our property. It goes to any number of places, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, it goes to any number of places. It goes to J and J Material in Plymouth. It goes to, um, Taylor Lumber in Marshfield. There's a couple of places in Carver where it goes. It, it really depends on where we're working, but it, the only thing that ever comes back to our property would be if I see something that I want to make a table out of or a chair or I want to burn it and keep my house warm, cook an animal.
Yes, of those of the customers who want material, you know, chips, logs, I mean, keep a list of those.
Yeah, we keep a list of, we give away a lot of, a lot of firewood and things like that. Um, we, we have a small little.
But you take a lot of wood back to your house?
If we feel like we can use it, yeah. I mean, we have a small splitter. It's, it, it, we can't really do like naughty stuff or anything. We don't have like a big commercial wood splitter. It's just a, you know, one piece at a time. And so all the odds and ends, we can't really use those. So we usually give those away. We try not to bring anything that's not perfectly straight back.
All the paperwork for your business should run out of your home?
Uh, yeah, the, the, the website, our website, no, no, it's not running out of our home. Excuse me. Our business addresses are all in Kingston. Our website is Kingston.
Yeah.
No, we don't, no, we don't have an office. We have modern cell phones. We don't, we don't, that's not how we do business. We get a phone call.
People don't pay by checks, credit cards?
Absolutely, they do. We, when, when we're done with. There's no paperwork, so I'll explain it, it's very simple. Uh, you call me, you want tree work done? I come to your house, I look at the job, I give you an estimate, I do the work. Well, we schedule a date, I come out on that date, I do the work. When I'm done with the job, you give me a check, it goes into the bank.
Nobody, nobody asks for a receipt?
Not usually, if they do, they just give me a check. They have a receipt.
And so then you're taking all that stuff and you're going directly to J and J and giving it all to them?
Uh, not the money, the materials, yeah.
No, that's what I mean.
Yeah, yeah, actually, so we used to do it like load, so, uh, normally it's chips. Chips you can get rid of, like anywhere. You can dump chips, lots of people want chips. Chips can go anywhere, you can dump chips for free. The problem is if, say, my chipper is down and I need to stuff my truck with brush. Well, that costs a little more to get rid of. So there are only a few places I can bring that and usually I have to pay by load. Now, I have an account, we just decided it'd be easier to get an account in a couple of places. We got an account with J and J Materials, so now I can just dump unlimited brush there. So I dump, they're, they're, I think they're starting to regret it. Um, they're going to probably charge me more money soon, but I dump a lot of material there.
So you make, you're a registered business, you pay taxes.
That's correct. We're registered, we're insured with the state, we have a tax ID number.
Your transactions, your in, your outs, money, where you.
Our accountant does that. And she is, she lives in Warens, so.
And you don't require paperwork to give to your accountant for, uh, to do your taxes?
We just give her a record of our, our. We give her our, just, we give her our bank records because we have a business card and we have a personal card. Any, any business expenses are done with the business card and there's a record of that. We just go to the bank every year. Actually, we don't even have to go to the bank, we print it up online. But usually we have the bank printed up because it's easier.
I have one question, another letter in here. Have, have you applied for a, a business at your home for a wood?
Um, so not intentionally, no. Uh, initially, this is sort of, we're starting to get into some issues I'm trying to hopefully avoid. The answer to that is, uh, not on purpose and it was withdrawn. So we did have a visit and we were told that in order for us to split firewood on our property, that we would have to obtain a business license. Uh, and, and there was a lot of back and forth on this because it just didn't sound right to me at all. But we just adhered to that and we came in the next day and we attempted to get our business license so we could split firewood on the property. so we could split firewood on the property. And it became sort of an issue and it became clear kind of that that maybe we've been a little bit misguided and that wasn't really the direction that we wanted to go and that I don't think we need a permit to split firewood on our property to heat our home. And so we withdrew said application.
This is Silver Lake Firewood?
Yeah.
Alright, that was drawn on April four, April second.
That's correct.
I'm trying to make sense here. Why are we talking about wood stoves?
Wood stove, I thought it was the wood stove that you were applying for, the outdoor wood stove.
No.
This is gonna be indoor, inside your chimney?
Yeah, yeah. No, well, not in our chimney, but yeah, it's gonna be in the home, yeah, vented, yeah.
It's nothing to do with that.
I thought it was gonna be outside.
No.
No, I don't, I don't understand this whole-
It's, it's, it's a little obnoxious, actually.
It sounds like, it, it sounds like they applied for a building permit to install the wood stove and he, and this is what you described in the beginning. I just hadn't read the letter yet.
No, 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 yeah.
It sounds like he decided to not issue the building permit because he and the fire chief visited and they both concluded that there's a zoning violation going on, which is why he, they, he won't issue a building permit to people who have zoning.
So, there's a, there's a use issue?
What is the, did he tell you?
He said, well, yes, he's, he's, he said that we were using the property for light industrial use, which is-
So I guess what, what, what is the petition, what's the question?
Laughable.
What are we being asked in this petition?
We're being asked to overturn his decision to not issue the building permit, appealing his decision.
And, you know, maybe we can clarify that there's no zoning issue at our property while we're at it because they're kind of-
So for us to overturn it?
I've got evidence.
You would have to, would have to put stipulations on this thing that you can't, you know, sell firewood out of your home.
Fine.
You can't operate that business out of your home.
Yep.
And there's a lot of things that we have to put.
So you have, we have an affidavit here that we thought would have cleared this whole thing up previously. He's been a bit-
Yeah, we have, we have.
Okay, yeah, sorry, if you wanna just- You have it. You just wanna take a second to read that. It should pretty much-
So you are, you are bringing no materials that you're clearing off other people's properties back into your property?
No, that's not correct. We are bringing back some logs.
And how much would you describe that to be? I think that's really what the question is. I think you think you're bringing too much, or you don't.
And, and to be fair, at the time of their visit, it wasn't expected. So I wasn't expecting company. No one had notified me that this visit was gonna take place.
Which arguably, they shouldn't do if they wanna find out what's really going on.
Um, well, I mean, if we're, I don't really wanna argue the trespassing issue, so like, maybe we just kinda like steer clear of that for now. And we'll just talk about that when this incident took place, I was in the middle of cleaning up my property. So I was moving things all over the place. And it's, it's a large piece of property. It's, actions taking place in a small portion of it, so when you're standing in and amongst it, I can see how there could have been a misunderstanding. But, you know, a small amount of explanation and, you know, just the fact that since then, the place looks completely different because I've done what I said I was, attempted to explain I was doing since then. But yeah, yeah, so at the time, there were several maybe piles, but most of those have been processed and turned into things. So-
How much, how much wood did you have on your property at the time when the-
At the time, there's a picture of it. You can see that there were, it was, it was, the, one of these pictures was taken very close was to the time that, that Mr. Pickarrell came to the property with the building inspector. And so there's several piles of logs there. You can see a couple by the barn. There, there's an area along the right side that we had cleared. And a lot of those did actually come from the property as well. But you can see here that they're all gone.
So, do you think-
So that was, that was then. Well, I, I don't think it's unreasonable, but I, I, I feel like not hearing like, hey, listen, I plan on building a fence with this, and I plan on using this for this, and I plan on using this for this. I feel like not listening to any of that was very unreasonable because it's all reasonable and, and it's been done. That curvy looking thing that looks sort of like, that's a fence. That's surrounding chicken coop and some pigs.
Do you sell any other wood? You don't sell firewood?
No. We don't sell wood. I don't sell any of the tables or any of the stuff that I make. We don't, so we give, we give that stuff away. So we, I mean, I don't wanna, we, we bill twelve hundred dollars a day. A cord of wood costs you, if you're like the most expensive guy in town, it's probably three hundred bucks a cord. We would have to process, we'd have to, we'd have to cut, split, load, and deliver four cords a day for us to make that even just comparable to doing tree work. For us, firewood is not profitable. Selling firewood is not profitable. For some people, selling firewood is profitable. You got a, you got a big enough operation or you maybe you buy it cheap and you sell it high, whatever. You got a commercial location where you can have lots of traffic and people come and get their own firewood, whatever. For us, splitting and delivering, loading and delivering firewood, we've done it in the past before we moved to Halifax, and it just, it just doesn't make any sense. It doesn't work for us.
How much firewood would you consume in one year?
Uh, it's hard to say. It depends on whether it's a really cold-
It's a cold year, they're cold this year.
Uh, we don't really keep track. If I had to guess, I'd say ten cord to-
A year?
Yeah.
In one year?
Yeah.
That's a little excessive.
That's a lot.
I mean, it, it's- We do, so- I mean- A cord is only a four by four by eight pile, so it's approximately a hundred and twenty cubic feet. It's really not that much.
Consider ten cords of wood in one year, that's a lot.
Well, considering that we don't just burn to heat our home, and we're trying to burn less wood, where that's what the stove is for. We want to go through less wood. I've, I've been begging for somebody to tell me if there's a certain amount of firewood I'm allowed to have. And, and I'd be happy to never exceed that amount of firewood. I mean, I'm sure that, that a lot of people in town would like to know how much firewood they're allowed to have on their property. It, this, the, it, that picture that we were talking about earlier, I think you've been the only one who's seen the updated photo. It's not representative of what our product, uh, property looks like now. That was just kind of the day we were, we didn't start cleaning that day. We're just sort of in the middle. We kinda had to pull everything apart before we put everything where it was gonna go. And we're literally like, not pants down, if you will, but in the middle of everything. And, and when we got this visit-
The property, the property's three, five acres?
Uh, no, it's, it's just over three. There's a lot of storm damage. There's all kinds of brush and stuff in the woods and-
We want our children to be able to play in the woods. I grew up across the street. My sister and brother played across the street in the woods. And I wanted my kids to do the same thing. And so we, when-
We're just trying to clean the place up.
We just cut a bunch of trees down.
Yeah, we had, so, well, I mean, I don't know about a bunch of trees, but, well, yeah, there are a lot of, it's hard, it's, so, without really like highlighting a lot of the stuff, you can, you can see just comparing some of the earlier photos from before we moved into the property to some of the more- cross, clustered photos.
For, for me, I don't know.
Yeah.
For me, like, everything you're saying is reasonable, but I don't know how much firewood is a reasonable amount to have.
Yeah.
The difference in this scenario that I, I need to feel better about to overturn his decision is, is that what I'm hearing you said already tonight is that you have a business where you clear off people's lots of wood.
No, 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 no. We do mostly pruning and removal of trees on residential properties.
Right, so you're removing-
So no clearing. We don't do any clearing. I'm sorry. Yes, yep.
And what I've heard you say is that you do bring stuff back.
Correct.
And I also have a letter from the building inspector and the zoning enforcement agent and who was with the fire chief at the time thinking that there is too much there. So I guess I was-
So, yeah, the code that's-
That makes me feel better, the pictures.
Well, also, yeah, I mean, a little bit. I mean, but even, even this isn't really, if you look at a, if you look at a-
The answer is not how much you need to have. You cannot bring business stuff into a residential zone. That's all of it.
Yeah, so I think that, I agree with that. And I think that once I bring this home, it's not business stuff anymore because it's for use on my property. I don't plan on it ever leaving. So I, I don't bring this stuff home and process it and then dispose of it, or process it and then sell it. I put it in my wood stove, or I turn it into mushrooms, or I cook animals with it, or I make fences out of it, or tables, or any number of things that we've brought pictures of.
So you have a processor that you, you can process the wood at your, at your house? That you cut, you cut the logs at your house?
Uh, I cut them into fire, no, so we don't have the means to do that. Well, when we need something milled into boards, we usually bring it to Taylor Lumber and they, they mill it into lumber for us and then-
So where do you store the wood at your home?
Uh, if I have a log that I wish to mill into lumber, it's-
You store it in your-
The lumber is used also on our property. So there, we have a chicken coop that we built out of lumber that we had milled. We have a nook, a breakfast nook that we built out of lumber that we had milled. We don't, we don't sell lumber, if that's what you're asking.
Is everything else up enough? You've got the wood stove certified. Everything's all-
Yeah, that's why we, I, I mean, I'm, I'm a pretty handy guy. I try to do a lot of things myself. But, uh, you know, a wood burning stove in my house, I thought it might be a good idea to hire a professional to do that. I don't, I didn't, you know, if I had plumbing or electrical work, I'd, I'd hire professionals to do that. If I was gonna do some like painting or reciding my house, I would do that myself. I build a lot of things, mainly enclosures for our animals, and it's all out of wood that we bring home. If we need, you know, we haven't been, we, we haven't, uh, we've brought home this year maybe a cord of wood. Uh, we haven't brought a lot home this year. And, and we, you know, we, we, we kinda feel like we sort of have enough. And we've, I mean, we might need a little bit more pine because I ran out of pine. We've been cutting them into rounds and building, it's like a cordwood fence kind of. And, and, you know, we have three acres of property, so we have like a third of a mile long of fence that we need to build. It's, it's gonna take a lot of rounds. But for now, we're just going around the animal enclosures and we kinda like the way that it looks. This is before we, before we cut it flush. This is what the fence looks like that they were building. And we're gonna reinforce it with hog panels and, you know, put some trim every so many feet so that it kinda looks a little bit, you know, not super rustic. These are logs that we have. They form like a choke point. There's a gate on those and that's water for our pigs on top of there. These are logs that we use to make our garden beds with. You know, this is just a bench, the, an older bench that we made that's by the fire pit. We moved it from our previous location. We don't really, we don't, these are, these are just being used to elevate a two seventy-five gallon tote just so that we can, we don't have to pump the water to where we need to get it. It's, the gravity will take care of it. This is the breakfast nook we made out of logs that we had milled.
So it sounds like this was just applying for the Silver Lake firewood?
At the, at the direction of, of the building inspector. He told us that, that we, that's, that's the way that we had to-
And the excess amount of wood at the time-
Yep.
For personal use. It just sounds like this was just misunderstandings. So I think if they have all their ducks in a row, as far as the cert, you know, the stove has been certified and, you know, you understand that there's no, no business can be run on the property.
That's not, we don't, we don't-
Nothing can be processed and sold, wood chips, fencing.
We don't want that. He's, he's talking.
That's alright.
Don't-
Should we kinda make a motion?
Just wait a second, please.
Does anybody wants to make a motion to reverse the building inspector's decision?
Anybody speak to it? Yeah, I don't know if anybody wants to speak.
I mean, I don't know-
Does anybody wanna speak to this petition?
I know it sounds like you're pretty industrious. I'm, I admire you.
The stuff that you're doing, a lot of stuff.
I'm a very busy person. I don't like to stay still. Usually when I'm, there's any kind of stress or grief in my life, I can kinda just go out back and work and just get stuff done.
Anybody wanna make a motion to reverse the building inspector's decision? Anybody wanna go over and ask it? It's up to you guys.
I guess my only concern is, is not, it looks like you're using that stuff. My only, the, the, people are paying you to, to remove those trees. So basically, they're paying you to take their trees?
Yep.
And I guess the question I have is, like, if you live in that property for twenty years, you're just gonna accumulate everybody's trees for years in your-
No, heck no, 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 not at all, not at all.
You're doing a lot of stuff.
No, we are doing a lot of stuff.
That's the concern was, and that's kind of what my-
I don't, we don't, we, so we, this place, we wanna use this. We want as much open space as we can have. We don't, these pictures from earlier when he came, that was driving me crazy. It was winter time. It was a little bit tough to move things around. We couldn't quite organize things the way that we wanted. We, we, we could bring not a single piece of material home ever again and it would affect our business zero. It would make zero difference on how we do business.
Is there, if we put a condition on it to make sure that you don't have to go through this scrap again, what would be a reasonable statement to put in as a condition?
Um, I mean, the fire code says that we're not allowed to have greater than three hundred yards of chips or, or, specifically mulch, but chips are pretty much the same thing. It's the same concern.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It is a lot. It is a lot. And it doesn't really translate-
What you can have on your property, because I don't think that's fair. I think the business piece is real, like, you know, like-
So how about this? How about I'm not allowed to bring home, you know, I'm not allowed to process any brush. I'm not allowed to do any, like, industrial recycling operations. I'm not allowed to process mulch. I can't store, I can't have multiple bays of material, or I can't bring any-
Don't you say storage?
Yeah.
That's a lot. That's a lot for me. I don't know, you guys.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
It appears to me that he's here for a wood stove program. The zoning issue seems to have already taken care of. And to put a stipulation that the zoning law already takes care of, it doesn't seem to make any sense. He's here, he's asking for an appeal, the building inspector, for putting a wood stove in his house. It appears that he's already proven what he's got and what he's doing there. Unless there might need to be a stipulation, why can't he put the wood stove in the wood?
Nobody believes the other guy. Nobody believes this guy. And it's, you're probably absolutely right. I just-
Well, I mean, it's kind of open. It doesn't really, think about it. It doesn't make a lot of sense.
They sent us a letter saying that that was going on over there. That's, from, from my perspective, that's exact, that, I'm asking these questions on behalf of the town. I don't, I, I, everything you look like you're doing is, is on the up and up, and I don't wanna, there's no reason I wanna screw your business over, or you guys.
Well, it wouldn't be. It wouldn't, it would have no effect on our business. It, it would just affect us personally because we don't, we don't use buckets or cranes. I climb everything. So I'm doing tree work with ropes and chainsaws. That's, that's all I need to get a tree on the ground. I don't need a huge piece of machinery. I don't need a bucket truck. I don't need a crane. I don't need a crew. It's, it's all me.
Do you have a question?
Hold on.
We understand that.
Obviously, all we gotta do is address the wood stove issue. You know, like you said, if there isn't, if there isn't any zoning violation, how much wood he can have on the property, it shouldn't matter.
There isn't. It's a business question. It's not how much wood he can have.
Well, but that's-
How many times, he's not having, doesn't have a business, so. I mean, he has a business, but he's not running it from his home. He wants to heat his home with the wood. I understand.
Yeah.
But he's not selling it. He's not appetizing it. He's praying he'll even heat his house.
The determination, I believe, in getting this right, of the building inspector was, he and the fire chief soon thought it was a business.
Correct.
So-
And what he did say, to be honest, what he did say today is that he is removing stuff and has, it doesn't immediately have anywhere to put it.
And there was an application for a business.
So I asked a bunch of questions about that.
Yeah, I know, but we gotta sort it out. So, I think, I think we did, yeah, I think, yeah.
What's the proposal of the board? Jerry? Jerry?
I'd like to word this properly.
All right.
I make a motion to approve the appeal of the building inspector's, uh, decision to install a wood stove at this property.
Any second?
I'll second it.
No restrictions, no, not to, to put any business in?
I mean, I, I can't see where we can put a restriction on it.
No, you can't, you can't.
I, I think maybe just of respect to the fact that there isn't a business, and this is what he's stating here.
Yeah.
That there isn't a business that, that-
'Cause this is gonna prevent us from getting any future permits as well.
We're not just overturning this or whatever.
This is kind of a fixer-upper that we bought, and we're gonna need permits.
It's based on the fact that there was no business.
Right, with the, with, with, with respect to the fact that there is no business being run out of there.
Yeah, that would be better.
And I think that, I think that's correct and fair.
It is, because all of our business takes place on our customers' property. We can't, I mean, we can't physically, if we're doing tree work at our home, we're not earning any money.
Right.
All right, we have, we have a motion, we have a second. Bob?
So a yes is to overturn?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Bob? What's your answer?
Your first. Oh, is there a second? There's a second.
There, uh, okay, Dana?
No.
Here?
Uh, a vote yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dana? No vote yes. Passes four to one.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
If it's in, if it's, if it's there.
There we move along.
Uh-huh. Well, I mean, in the end.
We number nine thirty-nine?
Oh, yeah, all right.
There we go.
We're still going here, great. Nine thirty-nine?
Yeah, the petition nine thirty-nine?
Petition nine thirty-nine, I want nine forty-six.
Auto group?
Oh, man, okay. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, May third, at eight twenty, uh, in the Great Hall, on the application by Saint Peter Automotive Group, Alan and Derek Saint Peter, for a special permit for change of use to an auto repair mechanical business in the rear building located at four sixteen Rear Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. O two three three eight. Said property is owned by Halifax Park Plaza Patrick Maloney, as shown on Assessor's Map seventy-two, Lot ten, Book five two four six two, page seven. The applicant is seeking a special permit for a change of use from a vacant structure formerly used as a laundromat, filter, building, to an auto repair mechanical business in the rear building in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, section one sixty-seven seven C, table use regulations, quote, "repair garages for mu- motor vehicles and auto body soldering, soldering and welding shops." Area is own business, petition number nine thirty-nine. Did they submit a letter?
Are they here?
Did they withdraw? Yeah, they withdrew.
They withdrew?
Okay. Right. So they submitted a withdrawal letter. They just needed to make a motion to accept the withdrawal.
Who wants to make a motion to accept the withdrawal letter for the auto group?
I'll make a motion, petition nine thirty-nine, to accept the, um, agreement for withdrawal, but I'll suggest-
Any second?
Second.
We have a, a motion with a second. Take a voice vote. Bob?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dana?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, we move on to the next one.
Nine forty-six?
Nine forty-six.
The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, at seven twenty-five PM, in the Great Hall, at the Halifax Town Hall, one and nine, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass., on the application by Stephen J. Nicoletta, for a special permit to raise an existing garage and rebuild as an addition to home located at nineteen eleventh Ave, Halifax, Mass. O two three three eight. Said property is owned by Patricia L. Alt, and, uh, Care of F and M Properties, LLC, of sixty-five Leahy Road, Brockton, Mass. O two three oh two. As shown on Assessor's Map fifty-one, Lot forty-six, title reference Book five four five seven four, page seventy. The applicant is seeking a special permit to conduct, construct an addition to the existing house and the footprint of the existing garage, by removing the existing garage and foundation, to expand existing bathroom and bedroom, and to add a laundry room. This would constitute a continuation and an alteration of a non-conforming use in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, sections one sixty-seven eight A and one sixty-seven eight B. The area is own residential, and it's petition number nine forty-six.
Great.
Great.
All right, tell us what you wanna do.
I just wanna build a little addition off the garage that was existing. The existing footpaths, anything, a lot of the site, all of it, it goes empty. This is the garage. Now, we had, we did demo the roof on the garage, which is unsafe. So we've wanted to just renovate the building on the original footprint, not give it larger, just redoing that foundation, uh, that had, that had the garage. Just like you said, expanding the bedroom, adding laundry room, and extending the, uh, bathroom. Not increasing the bedrooms, just, uh, expanding the bedroom a little. I don't know if you get the plugs, if we can-
They're probably in here.
Okay.
Dan, I'll take those out right now.
This is the garage, this is the existing garage. So she needs to save the creation, just turn it to a- No, just expanding.
Sergeant Stacey, within the existing property?
Exactly.
And no, not adding a garage, cooking down?
Not adding a garage, just, uh, put the legislation on the foundation, this is the garage. That foundation is all falling out of that front end, and then retaining well, should continue off, you know. If you look at the picture, the wall, uh, retaining well continues up, the legislation, uh, we should add that also. But, yeah, that foundation, right, that, that existing foundation is falling out, so it's gonna come down in the rain.
So instead of garage, you're gonna have a little more living space?
A little more living space, extend the balcony, your time in that house. And that's basically, you know, what a building is, the kitchen's existing stand, and so the heat's good in there, so there's the roof siding windows, and that extension.
No change to the septic or anything like that?
Uh, we're gonna do just, uh, beautiful.
Huh?
That is, it's a wooden, first project, it's even a lot of stuff. But we're not expanding, no, no additional bedrooms. It's not going to be two bedrooms more.
Any questions on the board?
Nope.
It's pretty straightforward, yeah.
All right, any questions from the audience? Anybody wants to make a motion on nine?
Nine forty-six, six.
I'm permitting a property.
I'll make a motion to waive the onsite.
You want to waive the onsite?
Yes.
Dan?
Hi.
Jerry?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
We waive the onsite. Anybody wanna make a motion to accept or deny?
I'll make a motion to accept, uh, petition number nine forty-six, as stated.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Dan?
Hi.
Jerry?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Yes.
And myself, yes. It passes five to zero. Good luck.
This is fun. All right. The Halifax Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, May third, twenty twenty-one, at nine twenty, uh, on the application by Gary and Stacy Villard, for a special permit to construct a sixty-foot by a hundred-foot pole barn to store equipment and to have a business to store and process wood located at sixty-three Carver Street, Halifax, Mass. O two three three eight. Said property is owned by Gary and Stacy Villard of two seventy Franklin Street, Halifax, Mass., as shown on Assessor's Map seventy-one ten, Lot seventy-one ten, Book four five, four five six, page one seventy-six. The applicant is seeking a special permit to construct a sixty-foot by a hundred-foot pole barn to store equipment and to have a business to store and process wood in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, section one sixty-seven seven C, table use regulations. Area is own business, petition is number nine forty-two.
Mrs. Villard and Mrs. Villard, what would you, do you wanna speak to the application?
Yes, we're supposed to set up a sixty-by-one-hundred, um, pole barn, um, to have equipment, along with, um, we're seeking a permit to, um, have a, run our business out of there during tree work and property maintenance, and property maintenance. There's, uh, I believe you guys have the site plans that were passed by the plan board a week ago, and we're saying that they, um, go in, and, 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 uh, start the wood processing as well.
So you've been okay with the, the planning board and the rest of the boards in town?
Yes, and the fire chief has approved where everything is powered, the log piles, uh, wood chip pile, um, everything. That's going, it's, uh, sent letters, the kind of north, and we're okay with that.
Continuing.
Yeah, we continue what we're doing and how it's going, um, and we have, we're okay with, with site plan.
And what's it gonna be inside that building? What are you gonna have inside the building?
Um, our own equipment is to do, um, we have primors, uh, trucks, chipper, um-
Air, aerial lift trucks.
Things that are checked out of the, out of the weather, um, to do any kind of, um, work on our own equipment as needed.
You're gonna have electricity and heat in the bathroom?
Sure, yes.
And you have? You have the protest and?
Protest has been done, and the engineer is designing, but they are also leaving the house, because they're living in the house that's on the property, uh, and they're gonna be trying to do the septic system into the house. As well, by the engineer is thinking up all of that, and he has done, um, protest for that area.
Any members of the board have questions?
So what kind of processing are you gonna be doing?
Um, we, um, we cut, um, and sell firewood.
We will assume that you-
Sorry.
We, we know how much wood we can have on the property.
Um, yeah, we, we know this, um, with the fire chief, this fire, well, where our piles need to be, how big they can be, um, how much space around them, so they're accessible for the fire department. Um, we do not have anybody that comes on site to get anything. We do deliver firewood off-site, um, but we don't, and nobody comes anything out.
So is that the only processing, just split firewood?
That's, that's all we do, yes.
No wood chips or anything like that?
Uh, we create wood chips, we do the own tree service, um, but we, on the plan, we have a, a bin coming in that's gonna be twenty feet wide by twenty feet deep by six feet tall, and that's all the wood chips. That will hold eighty yards, which will not be required of a permit to have eighty yards on the block.
Any of the wood chips we process-
So that's basically process off-site at the sudden gap.
Right.
Yeah. And once the bin weaken, we'll get rid of it.
So what's the equipment like to process the firewood?
With, uh, the firewood, a log splitter, chainsaw?
Yeah, we don't have, um-
Just a small log splitter, or is it one of those big industrial?
No, we don't have a process.
We don't, we don't have a processor, we don't have a top grinder. It's basically just, it's just two log splitters.
Yeah.
I bought it at Home Depot.
What are the hours of operation?
Um, it's basically daylight hours, because even in the summer time, it might be a little bit longer, but it's, uh, normally, um, during the week, we work offsite. We don't, we do the tree work, and I'll go somewhere out for property maintenance, um, um, but we will come back after five o'clock in the summer time, so like seven or so, to do, to cut split firewood. But after dark, we're not out there, we don't do anything. In the wintertime, it's very quiet, um, we usually don't do much unless we are far.
Still wood on the weekends also?
Um, pretty much so, but we do have two neighbors here, um, that live directly across the street. And what you've basically seen over the last two months is all that we do. I mean, we're set way out behind, a little way out.
Yeah.
Occasionally chainsaw or a log splitter, um, but I didn't, I don't think it's enough. I'm only people over there.
I had a couple of questions, trying to make this time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody?
Fine.
Yeah, I'm also ready. I saw it the last time.
So-
Okay, Richard Nolan out of Fifty Car Street, which is not directly across from it.
Right.
That's between this park and this park. Um, you mentioned that you're going to be doing wood chips. I got a little problem with that, because the last couple of times, it's you've been taking wood chips out there, all over the street, all over the lawn, down in the catch basin, and that's not a good thing to have.
No, I had a issue with one of my trucks, with the doors in the back, um, were, were bent and broken, and if I didn't put a tarp on the inside of the truck, as of this morning, as of Friday, we just want a brand-new truck, you know, where the back-
I, I'm not against you doing business, but that's, you've done the work for me before, so I can connect. I have no problem with that, but, um, is the property gonna have a driveway? Or are you just gonna be driving? You're all placed out on Twenty Con Street. That's pretty muddy coming out of there. And is, is that going to be the same for there, or are you gonna put a dedicated?
There's gonna be a dedicated driveway, and it's gonna be reprocessed asphalt, um, in there. It's gonna be set up so that there is an actual driveway going in and out. It's not gonna be muddy, it's, um-
Okay, that's two of the things, yeah, and it is going to be in the back.
Uh, there is a moment, sorry.
We, we should, uh-
So, is the pole barn gonna be between the street and, and he's got all those log stacks? I mean, it looks like, uh, pay come down over there right now.
We're, we're looking at trying to get rid of all of that. I'm quite sure if you realize that it's a whole block of property, that all those logs are already there.
I know, who saw you for it, you remember that?
Yes, yes, so what we did when we bought the property, we organized it, and that's when the town realized that we had all the logs in it. And we're going to purchase it for once, the previous owner, who would pay him to do all the logs. But with the process cleanup, we're only allowed to have so much wood on the property.
And all that, uh, stuff staring down like this?
It's a big log, a big log, probably will be leaving.
You don't, like, it looks like, you know, all dirt and soil, I don't know, it's flat over, because, is that?
That's not ours, that's not ours, that's not ours. That's a lot of, I mean, yeah. Uh, fifty-four, yeah, and it looks like a mess all over, you know what I mean? It's pretty enough for our convenience, uh, you know, if you can fix it up or whatever.
It's bad enough, we look to the right and see how it was. It's pretty mild high, and soil and-
Where the garage was that was taken down, we're to the left of that and out back. Yeah, okay, um, we're getting rid of that large log pile that's, that you see from the street, and basically where that large log pile is, and where the pole barn is gonna go, but you're only gonna see the gable end of it, it's not gonna be facing the street. And we're gonna play, um, an asphalt, or not asphalt, a reprocessed driveway, so it will not be muddy. will not be muddy, it'll be neatened up, um, we're looking to make it look decent. We don't want, we're gonna be living there, so we don't want it to look off-life.
Our neighbors who actually bought the property next to us, they're there also.
Yes.
But they're in the process also of, you know, getting finished, going before the boards, you know, and it's gonna take a little, I mean, the big line we see out back was basically to the police, police department wasn't staring.
I have staff that wants help.
Into the...
Hold on a second.
Gary, it's totally different, that's another...
Hold on. Hold on. Wait a minute, wait a minute, that, um, they answered the question. Do you have a question, ma'am?
Yes.
Can you tell us your name?
I'm fifty-four, South Street. Um, Stacy, um, in the area, are you gonna plant grass? Are you apartmenting some other things to make it look nice?
We are. We're planning on putting some, um, some sort of trebery, like a, whether it be arborvitus or something, and some grass up front, um, to, to make it, to have a nice trebery field. We don't want it to look...
How, how tall was it gonna be?
Sir? What's that?
The sides, how tall was it gonna be? Um, the sides are sixteen feet, sixteen, yes.
Do you have a question, sir?
I would just add to the statement what's going on there, if that's useful. Um, Joe, progress over the thirty-seven progress week, we purchased, you might follow forty-nine house because of microbeach, the Arab species. We are in the process of developing to the same effect that they are, um, so it is a work in progress, and our site at the same time will also have, you know, normal access to it, it won't be anything like that. We're working with the, um, water department. Right now, if we get the road marked, we're working on building a little bit of a burn all by the road with the Iowa supervisor, that we will be able to have a nice trebery field, we'll have a nice, wanna show itself in front of flowers, and rather than actually run to a pit.
Any other questions?
What's that?
Any other questions to take until here?
Uh, right now, the problem is, every business with the younger is extremely busy, so I was hoping to be done by this person, um, probably in the spring or February or so.
But all that sign of being a movement, not at all?
Sir?
Yes.
That's a different, uh, that's a different application.
We're dealing with...
We're dealing with this one right now.
Behind is, so it's like, getting the lease department and, um...
They answered your question? Did they answer the question?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody, anybody else in the audience want to speak to this? Sir?
It sounds like they're trying to make that part of town look a lot nicer. It, it sounds like the only concern that people in the area have are, are the appearance, are the appearances, and that seems to be exactly what they're trying to work on.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Great.
So there's a lot of parking here, are you gonna be selling, people gonna be coming in and buying, purchasing things?
No, they're not, they're mostly kind of because of the size of the building, we have to have a certain amount of parking space, and that would be for anybody that works for us.
Employees?
Are all, yes.
Do you know how many employees you're gonna have?
We have two, but not since, two, one part time, one full time, and if we get another part time, we'll sell it.
You're not selling anything out of here?
We're not.
And that building is just for storing equipment?
Just for our, yes.
Jerry?
I'm fine.
Peter?
How are all the doors on the building?
Fourteen, fourteen feet.
The doors, the doors are fourteen?
Yeah.
It's twelve, so, I mean, there's a lot of questions.
We have a bucket truck.
It's in the business district, so I think that changes a lot of them. Like, this could be an accessory building, which means you can't figure out the twenty-five percent of the principal building, but it's a business district, so... And there's no, there's, there's no clarity on whether or not that applies or doesn't. That's the problem.
You're, you're...
Not, no. We're just gonna open a can of worms, everybody's dealing with every single thing.
Business hours, we can't.
The, the majority of it's gonna be in the building, and then there's a small area behind the building, that you won't be able to see from the street, and if we wanted to put trailer or whatnot, that would be there, it wouldn't be all of a white smell.
That's what I'm trying to find, the trouble, do you have my laptop, I can just search, so it's easier.
So if we wanted to put a specific hours of operation, what would you be looking for?
Within the daylight hours?
Well, let's say...
Um, eight to, eight to seven, eight, I mean, we don't, we can, to get the equipment ready to go, we need there by nine in the morning, and that's usually during summer time, but, um, in the back, it's like a spot.
I have one commercial account at Twinley's condos, that if they call and they say, you have to come sand.
That's what we're getting here, he's talking about.
Oh, no.
On call.
This is a commercial.
I'm a property...
You're talking about working on the property itself?
Which is the demonstration?
Yes.
Um, I would say later than seven o'clock at night.
Yeah.
And in the morning?
And in the morning.
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock.
And what about weekend?
No, we don't usually work on Sunday. Rarely through Saturday, if he does anything, we'll split some wood out back and on Saturday.
So at eight, eight to seven?
Six days a week.
Six days a week?
Yep.
Just to be on the safe side.
What's the budget of the board?
So firewood, all the wood?
Correct.
And, and this stuff is, I know you answered this, so is stuff gonna be delivered by a commercial business, or you guys bring it?
No, no, we bring the stuff.
I, I bring it in personally.
So no outside trucks are gonna come in and deliver wood for you, or anything like that, that's, everything's gonna be done by you people?
Everything is gonna be done by us, yes.
And all that, and all that can be done between eight and seven?
Yes, yes.
And the entire building is inside the built, the business district, correct?
Yes.
The entire property is?
Right.
And the log splitter is, they're just the small portable style?
Small, tag them behind your truck.
Yep.
On-site?
You guys wanna do an onsite inspection?
No, I don't think so. I've gone by a couple of times. I was there today, I went by today.
Wanna waive the onsite, make a motion to waive the onsite?
I'll make a motion to waive the onsite.
Second?
Second.
Uh, Dan?
Yes.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes, yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, now, make a motion to accept petition number nine forty-two.
I'll make a motion to accept petition number nine forty-two as stated.
Second?
No.
Are the, uh, operating hours between, uh, eight and seven?
Do you, do you agree with that? Do you want the nine, it's between eight to seven?
Eight to seven, six days a week.
Right? Any other speculation?
No large processes, just small portable type splitter.
And keep the noise level down?
Oh, yeah.
I decide we have to live right here.
We have a motion, who's second?
Yeah, I'll second, specifically because it's in the business district.
All right, Dan?
So what we're voting on is, um...
The bill?
As stated with the condition of...
With the conditions that, that our, our...
Seven to eight, Monday through Saturday.
Correct.
Um, yes.
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 Yes?
Myself, yes. It passes five to zero. Good luck. Good luck.
Good luck, gentlemen.
People, you're all right? Wow, that's a demo, yeah, that was the best. No, me too. What they, what they... Thousands of wood. Right? That's like, this market again. Sounds like they're... Are we good?
No, we have another one.
Yeah, right?
This is nine forty-seven.
It's on the tape, you can record that. All right, we good? Next one?
We're good.
All right, next up, next up, what are we doing?
Number nine forty-seven.
Nine forty-seven. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, at seven forty-five, to be located in the great hall of the Halifax Town Hall, four ninety-nine Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass. On the application by Stephen F. Monks and Nancy Brennan Monks for a special permit for an existing in-law apartment located at seventy-three seventy-three A Hemlock Lane, Halifax, Mass. O-two-three-three-eight. Said property is owned by Thomas and Mary Ann Sheringchin, as shown on assessor's map sixty-two, lot five D, book five twenty, page five. The applicant is seeking a new special permit for an existing in-law apartment in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaw, sections one sixty-seven-seven, schedule use regulations, and one sixty-seven-seven D twelve. Area is owned residential, and it's petition number nine forty-seven.
We own it as of Friday.
Okay. Today is Monday.
What do you plan on doing?
Nothing.
All right, done, okay.
Who's gonna live on the apartment?
My son and his new wife, with us.
We'll be in the...
They're getting married in seven weeks.
It's exciting.
Yes, along with...
You got a lot going on.
We just sold our house.
You just moved in?
Friday.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, they're, they're gonna be, uh, planning on doing crimes.
That's good.
But of course, we paid...
So nothing, nothing's gonna change in the apartment, everything's gonna stay the same?
We might change some paintings and some...
No structural changes, no structural changes.
No, it's beautiful just the way it is.
Yep, remember the board?
What?
Utilities are all shared, right?
Sorry, may I?
Utilities are all shared, you have your letter.
Nothing's gonna change.
Okay.
All the remains open, no doors put up?
Nothing's gonna change the, the way they gave it to us on Friday, nothing's gonna change.
Okay, and there's shared living space in there? Is there a shared room or shared living room or something? Is there an area that you both have?
We have access to both of them.
A common, a common area.
No, we all have access to the whole house.
Okay.
That's close, that's close quarters.
It's a very big house.
What's the budget of the board? Do we need an onsite?
Uh, I don't think so.
No one ever says that. It's my favorite petition of the night.
Just a renewal.
It's a renewal, yeah.
No, no, do you have a question?
Go ahead.
Going forward. I have the original petition when the house was built, and it says on it, because I did talk to Robert Picolet, okay, we became really good friends. Ask him. Um, and on the original petition, it says renew, I had him review, not renew, all right? And that was my question to him when, when this was presented. Now, we couldn't do this, because we didn't own the house at the time. So of course, the lawyers got together, they did this for us, that's why we're here tonight.
Now you're gonna renew it.
Correct.
Right.
From this point on, we do not intend to go anywhere else, do you know what I mean?
Yes.
So in five years...
You have to renew it.
I don't want to, no.
It's a review.
It's a review.
It's a review, it is. So you're gonna fill out a form saying everything's the same.
We're not giving you more money, we're not giving you...
Do you understand?
Don't give up the salary.
You're gonna be there.
The, the process has changed in the last few years, and now you just fill out the form saying everything's the same, and we just, we just...
Just a review, that, that you're gonna be there for a while.
But you're right.
But I'm telling you, we, I had this discussion with him, and I said, wait a minute, if we're gonna be there, why am I gonna have to renew, renew? I'm, I'm here already, I'm not renewing anything, you can come with you.
She's reading, she's reading stuff.
Oh, she was so close to being through.
So anyway, he agreed.
This is our first speaking, I said, we're a little sad, we're up here.
Listen, I asked him to be here tonight, listen, I said to him, I said, listen, am I gonna need you here tonight to just do this, 'cause this is our first experience? We've been in Halifax for three days, all right?
You're doing good. You're doing good. You captured the crowd.
So here we are, all right? So when I see you five years from now, you're gonna say...
They'll probably see me every day.
You might, they'll see your, they'll see your signature by you.
They'll see you every day.
Maybe, or maybe not, who knows? I don't know if I'll still be here, it's a tough crowd these days.
Just wave when you go by, all right?
You want coffee in the morning?
Well, I'm going the other way, I'm gonna be with you. So, so...
Oh, we gotta, we gotta approve this or something, right? Okay.
Make a motion to...
I'll make a motion to approve petition seven ninety-three as present.
Second?
All right.
Don't be thinking of...
Do you?
Yes. You drew a little early.
I know. Shouldn't we run for something?
Watch out.
Hey!
Bob?
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Myself, yes. It passes five to zero.
Whatever she wants.
Yes, I know.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Feel free to come to Brennan's, we'll shop in her place.
Do, duly noted, thank you.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
You too.
Thanks, guys.
Enjoy the wedding. I hope it goes well. It sure will.
Would it stumble?
Ooh, I don't know, that's, I don't know, I don't know, she seems lovely, though, so... Yeah, I know. Okay, now what are we doing?
Uh, J.F. McGrath's...
No minutes.
Lake Street denial letter? Denial of the building permit? Well, we gotta do the bills.
These binders are spectacular.
They are.
Don't dumb yourself today.
Wow.
I am very, very impressed, they're, they're tabs.
Absolutely awesome.
Well, I don't know, I don't know what the story is, but I love it. Thank you. Like, two bills?
I guess.
Light month. Something for me in here. See what's going on here? Do we look better?
I guess, I don't have a lot. One Hundred Lake Street?
Yeah, I think so.
Is that you?
Oh, these are the bills.
So I bought One Hundred Lake Street, and I applied for a permit to replace the roof and two grand windows, and he denied me for zoning.
Denied you for what?
He wants me to buy the house next door and get them both down and build one new house.[1656.72]
Read the letter?
I just wanna fix the...
Just the two?
He wants me to purchase one oh two Lake Street, and share that house down, and share this house down, and build one new.
What's the square footage of the, the One Hundred?
The house is a lot.
It's unusual.
What's the area size?
You said that the two... Um, I'm only saying, for that one point, it might be a long loss, but it's two different houses.
Seven, two.
And I wanna fix my, this is a house, and you want the other house, but you want to pick that.
And then they own two separate lots?
Two separate lots, two separate tax bills, two separate addresses.
So you didn't file, you didn't file for an application to do this?
Um, I talked to her, and she asked me to come in tonight.
Come in tonight for an informa, information?
Oh, okay.
Informal hearing.
All right, that's what it was, I guess.
We, we need you to submit an application.
Oh, I didn't realize.
Yeah, if you have to submit an application, then we go from there.
Okay.
She'll, she'll tell you what you need, and, uh, and she also has to do the same thing.
I guess I'll come in tomorrow for an application.
Yeah, for an application.
Yeah, so you probably, you probably applied to do something, and he denied.
I applied for building permit, and he denied it.
Yeah, and so what you...
But we don't have the denial.
Yeah, so what you do is either based on whatever that letter says, if, if it's...
How can you deny me a building permit?
So, so it probably says in the letter, yeah, so my suspicion is that...
He says that it's...
A non-conforming...
Non-conform law.
Yeah, 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 so you probably... So we, so, yeah, if you, so there's, there's, if you, if you have one of the million lots in town, and you're trying to rebuild a house, everyone who's, I wish the bylaws were better about this, so maybe we can fix it someday, but if, if, if it, if the alteration of the house is more...
I'm not changing the operation, I'm just fixing a roof.
Okay, so if the alteration is more than fifty percent...
It's not.
Of the value of the house, or if you're increasing, so, like, I'm just guessing what the letter says, we had the letter, I can tell you exactly.
Yeah, I should've brought my, my...
Yeah, but like, whatever, uh, along, I can kinda walk it.
I have eighteen thousand dollars worth of repairs.
Okay, okay, so yeah.
So it's not fifty percent?
No, probably not.
No, exactly.
I don't know what you're repairing, but you're probably right.
I'm doing the roof, couple of windows, I'm hooking up the power again, and I'm fixing the plumbing issue that didn't get the...
You, you know, you both have to apply, you know, do the application and come back in front of us next month.
She can walk you through the process, and then we can, you either need a special permit to do it, or you need to appeal his decision, whatever his letter says.
So you're gonna change the use of the house, right?
Sometimes, it gets weird. I know.
She's gonna file an appeal.
That's why today was so pleasant for us.
She'll, she'll walk you through, Elena will walk you through, and, uh...
Yeah.
I got a phone, so, I'm gonna... All right, thanks.
Sorry, thank you.
Bills are also signed, minutes?
Paying on it?
Huh?
You have to prove they're paying on the bills?
Oh, we used to have to, just, you know, to sign them.
The minutes, I think, the minutes.
Now that we're signing them, I think we're okay, right?
We have to prove paying the bills?
Or do we just sign them?
I'll make a motion to pay the, uh, two express newspaper bills, and one for fifty bows. I'll second it.
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Now, we have to, uh, we have, uh, other business, the forty, the forty B comprehensive permit, they're ex, they're asking for an extension to July twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one.
I think we already approved that, right? The last time, so that should be on next May?
It's on, it's, it's on the agenda, isn't it?
Yeah, I think they just did again, didn't they?
Oh, yeah, no, we have to meet on the twenty-first, and extend it, and we still have to meet on the twenty-first.
They wanna, they wanna extend it to the twenty-first. I don't think we voted on it last time.
No, we haven't...
But we have to come back on the twenty-first.
We have to go back on the twenty-first, and we want another extension.
Is that right? Let us through this, help us.
To July twenty-first.
I think we have to come back.
We have to be at twenty-first.
Yeah, that's what this is, yeah.
Will we vote on that?
No, I think we already set it.
We already did?
Yeah, I think we just have to come back, that's fine.
We gotta approve the meeting minutes?
Yes, you wanna look at the minutes?
Approve the minutes of May third, two thousand twenty-one? Anybody ready?
Yep.
Any correction?
I didn't see any correction, though.
No. Make a motion to accept?